All right, good evening. Welcome. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, August 22, 2023 at 5:30 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Kay Zimmerman from City on a Hill International Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Echo Group Band of Brothers Arizona with Stacy Lee and Ashley Harris.
Thank you. Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, I just thank you for our beautiful city. Thank you, Lord, that you have great plans and purpose for this city. And I thank you that so many people care what happens to this city. So many people love this city. I thank you for it. I thank you that you've given us a mayor and a council that love this city and other leaders as well. I thank you, Father God. I thank you for their service. I thank you for our policemen, our firemen, Father God, for those who protect this city. I just thank you, Father God, that I ask for your presence even in the meeting, Father God, that there would be a spirit of unity. Lord, that we would follow your lead here. You created this city. And so we ask that they follow your lead. So help us to hear what you're saying and do what you're doing, Lord. And I'm just going to lead us in the decree that God gave us for our city in 2007. And he said, decree it till you see it. So that's why I do it every time. I decree over the city of Lake Havasu City that this city shall be a city of righteousness that honors God in all her ways, a city of hope to all her people and all those who come here, a city of light where darkness finds no room to hide, a city of love that prospers in all her ways, providing prosperity and goodwill to all her people as well as those surrounding her, and a city of peace to all who dwell here in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
If you're a veteran, please stand at the position of attention and wait for the call to present arms. Present, hoot! I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, hoot!
Thank you and welcome Stacy and Ashley. Did you want, if you want to stay there and I'll introduce Jerry Bracchamani, we are, oh, are you going to share some information about your organization? If you actually could do it at the microphone so the people at home can, I can hear you as well. The people at home can't hear you.
Okay. First of all, thank you, everybody, for having us. Thank you, council members, mayor, for having us here this evening. I've had the honor of meeting most of you in the past, and thank you to the community for having us here. I want to thank Sunline Asphalt in advance for having us here and, of course, our community as well. I am the co-president of the Echo Group Band of Brothers Organization. I'm the chapter president of the Arizona Chapter, as well as a Metaverse Chapter called Second Life. We're an organization that is a peer-to-peer mentoring for the veterans by the veterans. We're there for our veterans and their family members, active duty, it doesn't matter, any service member. Our main mission is to combat the 22-a-day, the suicide mission, the homelessness mission. We started in California, 2013. We became a 501(c)(3) nonprofit in 2017. In a nutshell, healing through sports. We get people out of isolation, off their butts off the couch and out on the ball field or any other sport that we have that we do. This jersey has to be earned by our veterans by giving back to their community through service. What brings us tonight here is we are starting up our softball program. This is our first chapter that we've started since we are established in California, and we are very honored to be here in Lake Havasu and very honored to give back to our community of veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Thank you for all that you do. And thank you for bringing that group to Lake Havasu City. I'm now going to introduce Jerry Bracchamani and our Havasu Youth Advisory Council. We're proud to have our Hayak group with us this afternoon. And we'll turn it over to Ms. Bracchamani.
Try to find a spot around me. No, she's going to take pictures of us. Okay. Good evening, mayor and council. I am Jerry Bracchamani, Havasu Youth Advisory Council Advisor. And as you're aware, every year, the youth council, or Hayak they're known as, sets out to give back to this community through a community project. Tonight, we have a special presentation for the Echo Group Band of Brothers Arizona Softball League. At the Vietnam Veterans Day event last March, I was invited to a conversation with Stacy, the co-president of the Echo Group, regarding her need of donations to pay for one season of a veteran softball league she is coordinating right here in Lake Havasu City. I offered to Stacy that I would talk it over with this year's Hayak group to see if this is something they wanted to do for this year's community project, and they agreed. Our veterans are valuable to this community, and they wanted to help in any way they could. That being said, the youth council also knows the importance of partnering with other local organizations and businesses in order to be successful in giving back. So this year, we partnered with Sunline Asphalt and Construction, a company based in Phoenix that has bid on or worked on several local projects over the years. Sunline has a local connection through my son, Greg Hughes. Greg was born and raised here in Lake Havasu City, graduated from ASU in Tempe, and works for Sunline Asphalt as a project engineer. Greg is here tonight with his son, or his boss, Michael Lucarelli, to give back to his hometown. Sunline Asphalt has a program called Sunline Cares, doing their part year-round, volunteering and giving back to local organizations across all their divisions nationwide, connecting with nonprofits. Greg brought the Echo Group's need for a veteran softball league to the Sunline Cares Committee, and they were ecstatic to help out our veterans from his hometown with this incredible opportunity. $2,500 covers the cost of fees for one season. Not only is Sunline covering the first season, but they are offering to cover the first two seasons. And would like to present a check to Echo Group tonight in the amount of $5,000. Greg and Michael, please come up.
Hello, my name is Greg, Greg Hughes, and this is Michael Lucarelli. And I want to say thank you to Hayak for the opportunity, as well as Band of Brothers. We're excited to give to you guys. Sunline Cares Program has three people that are from Lake Havasu that are actually locals as well, and then we have 44 employees that are veterans. So this is a cause that's near and dear to us, and we're glad that we can give back to the community.
We brought the Band of Brothers t-shirts. So, and now, so this is our 22-a-day. You'll have these for sale soon to help our donation, because we are with our ongoing project. But this is the 22-a-day shirt. And we recognize this to all of our veterans. Thanks, guys.
All right, we'll move on to item four on our agenda, the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Council members Nancy Campbell.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
I am here.
Vice Mayor David Lane.
Here.
Mayor Kalshihi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to pull any of the items for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to pull off item number 5.13, please.
I'm sorry, 5.3?
I'm sorry, 5.3.
5.3, okay. Would anyone else like to pull off any additional items?
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Please.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda minus item 5.3 as presented.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Koch. We have a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. And now we'll hear item 5.3, which is adopt resolution number 23-3700, establishing Rocky Point, Sonora, Mexico, and Lake Havasu City, Arizona as sister cities. Ms. Gary.
Good evening, mayor and council. The city was approached about participating in the Sister City Program. The Sister City Program is a broad-based, long-term partnership between two communities in different countries. The Sister City relationship offers flexibility to form connections between communities that are mutually beneficial and which address issues that are most relevant for partners. It takes on many different forms and would be whatever is workable for both of the cities. Lake Havasu City and Rocky Point are suggested to be sister cities because they share similar socioeconomic and cultural characteristics. Both cities have robust tourist industry with many outdoor activities and an abundance of natural beauty. Both have similar populations and each host numerous events annually and also have colleges or universities within the city limits. The city is interested in participating in this program. This adoption of the resolution would be the first step. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Gary. Yes, so the Mexican general consulate based in Phoenix reached out to all of us in June and sent an email. They then came and met with me in person to talk about different opportunities with the state of Sonora. And there was options, but they wanted to find one that had similar interests. So as Ms. Gary mentioned, both have similar population, both have tourism as a main economic driver, and both of us actually have some shared water relationships as well that potentially could be beneficial to us in the future as we go forward. So that was why this item came before us, to be able to join in this. The city has done something similar in the past, many, many councils before, but this would be the new iteration of that. With that, do any members of the council have any questions?
No, I just had a constituent ask me about it, and they had an article in the paper. So I just thought it would be nice to expand on that. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right. This is in a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
Good evening. I have a question regarding, a few questions, actually. When I read about being a sister city with another city in a whole other country, I thought it was really cool. And, but then something occurred to me was if you, any of you, go to Rocky Point as a representative to the city, are you going to be able to write that trip off when you go there as under taxpayer money? You know, on a weekend trip or something like that? If you go and talk to the mayor or? As a businessperson who, you know, businesspeople do go on vacations and are able to conduct business at other locations, so I was just wondering if that would happen? And also, why was? Why does the mayor and the council have to be involved with this? And because that's what I thought we had Go Lake Havasu for, and I thought Go Lake Havasu would be handling the tourist aspect of broadening our horizons.
Thank you. Are those your questions?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, no, I'll answer those if you would like to have a seat. Yeah, I'll answer them as you make your way to your, to your seat.
What happens if your questions lead me to more questions?
Yeah, Ms. Williams, I'll be able to answer those questions for you, but if you have any additional questions, I'll be happy to entertain those as well.
Well, I would need to know the answer to the question.
Yeah, so my, my answer for the tax would, I would recommend that anyone that takes advantage of something like that, reach out to a tax professional and see how that works. We don't anticipate to have any travel at this point. This is strictly to build relationships from a public policy standpoint, and that's why it's the mayor and the council that would be interacting with the mayor and council in Rocky Point to be able to address any public policy issues that may arise in relation to the Sister City obligations.
What public policy would you have to be in a sister city?
Yeah, so once we get the authorization this evening, then we'll start the relationship, and then we would be able to understand what those would be. But it would be things such as policies on short-term rentals. How do they address short-term rentals? How do we do short-term rentals? How could we maybe utilize some of what they use or they utilize what some of us do? Would be one example, potentially.
Okay, but? And the tourist aspect of it, how come Go Lake Havasu isn't being part of this?
Ms. Williams, we have a relationship of shared economic drive with tourism. So the example I gave you when it came to short-term rentals?
Yes.
Is tourism.
Right.
Yeah, so that's a public policy issue that the mayor and council would be responsible for. Therefore, why Go Lake Havasu would not be involved?
Okay, so Rocky Point mayor and council can help influence our council with tourism, I mean, not tourism, but what you just described also?
Potentially. I was just giving you an example.
Right.
That's a potential example.
So you're?
Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
And I'm hoping I'm doing this the right way. My name is Vicky Murray, 2031 Cabana Drive. And what you're saying, where's our legal representation for we when you do all of this stuff? I want to know that. You sit up here and you tell us that we don't have a say. We have a whole lot of say, and we want legal representation on all of these codes. Did you just cancel the discussion on easement? You didn't take that up the menu?
No, we're talking just about a sister cities agreement.
Like I said, but I want to know who legally represents us on code on all the things. Don't eat and plantings, a biggie for me too.
Okay.
I'll wait my turn when you bring it back.
Please, yeah, when those items come forth, yes. All right, would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. For discussion, possible motion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Koch?
Motion to approve item 5.3 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Move on to item six, which is our correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. We'll start with 6.1, which is announced vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and city council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one alternate pilot member. Board of Adjustment, two regular members and two alternate members. And the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one student member. Anyone interested can pick up an application packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at LHCaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.2 is our city manager's report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. I'd like to start my report with a very special recognition, excuse me, to recognize somebody very special to Lake Havasu City. It's one of our finest. This is Detective Tara Flag, who's, who's with us in the, in the audience. Detective Tara Flag received the Women to Watch 2023 Early Riser Award from the Arizona Women's Initiative Network, a very great accomplishment. Tara was nominated by her supervisor due to her extraordinary performance. Her professional and personal journey today is incredible. And why she was nominated by her supervisor for this award? Tara enlisted in the U.S. Army in 2004. She received an ROTC scholarship and attended the University of Maine. She graduated with a degree in sociology with a concentration in crime, law, and deviance. And she was then commissioned as a second lieutenant in the Army in 2009. She served five years of active duty, then transitioned to the Army Reserves, where she is currently a military intelligence officer. Her current rank is major, which she's in charge of human intelligence as part of the 386th Military Intelligence Battalion. Tara began her, began her law enforcement career in 2019 with the distinction of being named the top overall recruit here for Lake Havasu City. In her career, she served as patrol officer, field training officer, and AZ Post General Instructor, and a NOVA instructor. She completed basic and advanced SWAT schools and is a member of our traffic team. Her current role as a detective is in the Criminal Investigations Unit specializing in child crimes, protecting our kids in Lake Havasu City. Outside of her normal duties, Tara volunteers with numerous different community programs that are sponsored by the police department, such as Shop with a Cop, Coffee with a Cop, and the Special Olympics Torch Run Events. Additionally, she participated in the Read Across America campaign, taking time to read to children at our local elementary schools. She coached for the Girls on the, on the Run Program and is a lead role in, as an advisor for the Police Department's Cadet Program. And she was recipient of today's News Herald's 40 Under 40 Award for taking such an active role in the community through volunteerism. Mayor, with that, I will turn it over to you as we bring the Detective Flag up front so we can recognize you.
All right, so we have Detective Flag from Mr. Knutson's report. This is an example of the amazing public safety personnel we have here in Lake Havasu City. We're so honored to be able to have Detective Flag with us, and we're going to give her recognition, a certificate of recognition for all of her achievements, presented to Detective Tara Flag for the Women's Initiative Network 2023 Women to Watch Early Riser Award. On behalf of a grateful city, I, Mayor Kalshihi, would like to express our heartfelt congratulations for being nominated and awarded the Women to Watch Early Riser Award from the Women's Initiative Network. You exemplify the heart of our community through your devotion and selflessness to protect the safety of our citizens. We are very thankful for your courage and conviction to serve others as a police officer with the Lake Havasu City Police Department. Lake Havasu City is a special place because of leaders like you that demonstrate exemplary performance above and beyond the call of duty through your volunteer work, training, education, and personal and cooperative development. We sincerely thank you for putting your best self forward each and every day to make our community a better and safer community for all. We congratulate you on your well-deserved award and thank you for your service to Lake Havasu City. Yes, for a second. And Detective Flag's family's here, so thank you for sharing her with us in Lake Havasu City. Come on up. And I've also had my colleagues join me and the chief of police, Troy Sterling. We'll take a photo real quick so everyone comes together. Is there more family? Yeah, come on in. Yes.
That was amazing. Thank you. Mayor, you and as well as Vice Mayor David Lane and other community leaders, community leaders joined a roundtable discussion held by U.S. Senator Kristin Sinema at the Nomadic to discuss how we can work together with her office to deliver solutions and challenges to facing our area. We talked about water, affordable housing, healthcare, workforce development, and infrastructure. So we also had Vice Mayor Dave Lane, as I mentioned, Councilmember Jim Dolan, Councilmember Cameron Moses. And did I get everybody?
Councilmember Jenny Koch.
And of course, Councilmember, award-winning Councilmember Jenny Koch. Lake Havasu City hosted the Arizona State Parks and Trails Board meeting in our community chambers just last week. The board traveled to Lake Havasu City and spent a couple days here, getting familiar with the area and exploring our amenities. A special thank you to Mike Keen, our Parks Director, for leading the tour for the board while they were here in Lake Havasu City. We appreciate hosting them, and we're grateful for the strong partnership we have with Arizona State Parks Board and Trails Board, excuse me, Arizona State Parks and Trails Board. And we look forward to continuing the tour together on existing and upcoming grant opportunities. And finally, the Lake Havasu City Transit Fixed Route Service, known as the Bridge, resumed service this week. The bridge runs from Monday through Friday from 6:25 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. and is closed on weekends and, and city-recognized holidays. There are eight bus stops, including two newly added ones located at the English Village and at the Quality Inn. For more locations, detailed route information, or about how, maybe how to purchase a pass or other information regarding transit, please visit our website or call their office directly at 928-453-7600. Mayor and council, that concludes my report for this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Knutson. All right, we're going to move on to item seven, which is our public hearings. During our public hearings, this is the opportunity where we will have each individual public hearing, citizens will have an opportunity to engage with the city council when we open the public hearing. We ask that you just make your way to the podium, state your remarks, but just address the council directly. Your comments are limited to five minutes during the public hearings. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have time. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that your five minutes is up during the public hearing. We'll remind you as we go through those, but that's the only time that we can have a two-way conversation. We cannot have a two-way conversation. Otherwise, then at the end of the meeting, there will be a call to the public, which is an opportunity for citizens to address us on items not on the agenda, but we can't have a two-way conversation during that. I will make a comment. We're getting reports that those that are watching at home are having some sound issues. If you're experiencing that, and you can hopefully hear me right now, you can also go over to the website at LHCaz.gov/tv, and you can watch the meeting there as well of overhearing reports from those watching on Channel 4 that the sound's coming in and out. We are working on it. We have a call into our provider right now, and hopefully that will rectify very, very shortly. But we'll move on to item 7.1, which is a presentation from Wild and Financial Services on the 2023 Utility Cost of Service Rate Study. Mr. Kozlowski.
Good evening, mayor and council. This item is a continued discussion regarding the proposed water and wastewater rates. At the July 25 meeting, we received an initial presentation from Wild and Financial Services regarding the proposed rate options. Based off of discussions from the public as well as council, staff updated those rate options as needed. Tonight's presentation, we will have a further discussion regarding the two remaining options, which are Option A, the cost of service option, and Option D, the phased approach for multifamily. Along with those two options, we'll have further information regarding multifamily rates for our comparable communities and where we, we stack up as that pertains to those other cities. It is important that during this, at the conclusion of this discussion, that we receive additional feedback from the public as well as consensus from council regarding the two remaining options, as this will help staff as we prepare for the upcoming adoption hearing in September. On another note, staff can also announce that a rate calculator is now available on the city's website for residents to utilize and get some more information as it pertains to what their bills could potentially look like based off of their overall conception. And with that, I will turn it over to Kevin Burnett with Wild and Financial Services for the remainder of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Burnett. Welcome.
Good evening. Thanks. Thank you, Anthony. So as Anthony said, we're going to be revisiting the rate options. It's a pared-down presentation from what you've seen before, as well as some as well as some additional information that we didn't have previously. All right. So yeah, so it's a much briefer presentation than we went through last time. So next slide, please, Anthony. So we'll start off with water. So as we discussed last time, these are the proposed monthly fixed charges. So this charge would be assessed to all customers regardless of their water flow every month. So this is on a per meter basis as opposed to a per unit basis, which is what we see on the sewer side. So what I mean by that is a single-family home with one 3/4-inch meter would pay the $9.02. A multifamily unit with four units in it and only one 3/4-inch meter would pay $9.02, not four times $9.02. A commercial strip mall that would have five different tenants within the strip mall, if it had one 3/4-inch meter serving the property, they would pay $9.02, not five times $9.02. So it's a per-meter charge as opposed to a per-unit charge. The other thing we wanted to point out on this is the 2024 rate. It's the same as the current rate is for all meter sizes. We wanted to do that for two purposes. The first was to try and encourage conservation. So the more revenue we recover through the volume rate as opposed to the fixed charge, the greater the conservation signal. And we also wanted to minimize the burden on the smaller volume users. The base charge tends to hit lower volume users harder than it does larger volume users. So next slide, please. So this is one of the two options that we narrowed things down to last time. So this was Option A. So this was an update to our existing cost of service rate structure. So all of the tiers have been adjusted under this rate option in order to encourage conservation. We've taken another look at the unit cost by tier. And based on feedback from the public, we wanted to try and equalize the residential customers. So what I mean by that is if we had 26% water use by the single-family class in Tier 1, we wanted to set the Tier 1 for multifamily so that it would recover 26% of water use or as close as we could get to it. And for RV parks as well, that their tier was structured so that 21% of RV parks' water use would fall in Tier 1. So next slide, please. So this is the single-family and the multifamily rates. So again, you can see there, we've reduced the tier thresholds to try and encourage conservation. So looking at single-family first, the first tier currently is 0 to 500 cubic feet a month. That's going to 0 to 300 cubic feet. The second, third, and fourth tiers have also been tightened up a bit. So previously, we only had 8% of water use in Tiers 3 and 4. Right now, we're looking at 25% water use would fall under Tiers 3 and 4, again, to try and send that conservation signal that the more water you're using, the more you pay for it. And water is a limited resource. So we did something similar on the multifamily side. We tightened the tiers up there as well. The change on multifamily that you see that you don't see on single-family is we kept the first-year rates the same. So while we tighten the tier thresholds on multifamily, the unit cost themselves does not change in the first year. And so you can see there, Tier 1 for a single-family has that 26% water use. Tier 1 and multifamily also has 26% water use. So the rates for 2024 are proposed to go into effect November of this year and then subsequent years, so '25, '26, '27, and '28, they would go into effect September 1st, so just after the heavy irrigation season. Next slide, please. So since we met last time, we took a look at what other, the comparable entities, we'll look at those slides, that comparison, a little bit later. But we wanted to see what they were doing in terms of their single-family rate structure compared to their multifamily rate structure. So looking at Avondale first, single-family is a tiered structure, much like you have here. But multifamily is treated more as a commercial-type customer, where it's just one rate for all water use at the multifamily level. For Bullhead City, there's no difference in how they assess rates to single-family versus multifamily. For Yuma, you can see the unit cost for each tier is the same between single-family and multifamily, but less water use is available in each tier for Yuma. In terms of Buckeye, there's one base rate. So they don't have a meter charge by meter size for single-family customers. It's just one flat base rate. And then they've got five different tiers for their water use. And on the multifamily side, there's a charge based on the size of the meter. And then it's a uniform rate of $8.08, which falls somewhere in between Tiers 4 and 5 for single-family. On Flagstaff, we've got the tiered rate structure there. On the single-family side and a multifamily, again, it's treated more as a commercial-type customer, where it's one uniform rate. And then Morana and Kingman, there's no difference between their single-family and multifamily rates. Next slide, please. Goodyear, again, no difference there. Looking at Prescott, so both single-family and multifamily have tiered rate structures. The tiers are smaller for the multifamily side, but the rates are also a little bit less on the multifamily side compared to Prescott. And then Casa Grande, no difference between how they treat multifamily versus single-family customers. So jumping back into the rates themselves, so looking at the commercial rate structure. So as was the case with all the other classes, we tightened up the tiers there previously. The third tier, the upper tier, for commercial, you only had 4% water use fall in that top tier. So we tightened that up and you're now at 14%, again, to try and send that conservation signal. And then we also increased the rates for each of those tiers. For single-family irrigation, the current tier structure right now, 100% of water use is falling into Tier 1, which in our view would argue that that's not a conservation-oriented rate structure. If everybody gets all the water that they need in Tier 1, they really have no incentive to conserve. So we modified the tiers there, tightened them up so that we now have 55% in Tier 1, some use in Tier 2, and then some use in Tier 3. And then we kept the unit costs the same for each of those tiers, but did tighten them up significantly. Same thing for other irrigation. Right now, you have 100% water use in Tier 1. Not a very strong conservation signal if you get all the water you need within the first tier. So we tightened those up, increased the unit costs. And then on the RV park side, this is a bit of an anomaly compared to the other ones, whereas the other ones, we tightened up the tiers and how much water use was allocated in each tier. And in this case, we've increased it to hit that. It was 26% for single-family and multifamily. So we're close. We're at 24% of water use in Tier 1 for RV parks. But that meant having to expand the amount of water that was used in Tier 1 in order to achieve that similar water usage by tier. But then we did keep the rates the same for that first year as well for 2024. So next slide, please. And then hydrants, we're maintaining the existing rate structure of a uniform rate. So all use is charged at the $2.51 for 2024 and then increasing going forward into the future. So this is a slide that we showed last time as well. So this is looking at the percentage of bills that would increase under Option A and how much it would increase, assuming that the customer uses the exact same amount of water in the upcoming year as they did last year. So those customers that would see no increase in their bill, 22% of single-family, 36% of multifamily, 7% of commercial, et cetera, down the line. The number, percentage of customers that would see 0 to 5% increase in their bill, 2% of single-family, 21% of multifamily, 27%. And then it increases as we move up the chart. So vast majority of bills are increasing because of that RV park change that we made where we increased the tiers. That's why we're seeing some RV park customers would actually see a decrease. So next slide, please. So this was the second option that we decided on based on the last go-around. I think Anthony referred to it as Option D in his opening. So what we were attempting to do here, and this would only apply to multifamily and RV parks. So Option A would still apply to single-family, to commercial, to irrigation. So this would only be a carve-out for multifamily and RV parks. And the idea behind this option here was instead of having rates that jumped and weren't smooth going forward over the next five years, multifamily and RV parks, to manage their budget better, we're going to have the same incremental percentage increase in the bill every year. So it would go up by 7% every year as opposed to a 15% one year, 8% next year, 6%, 7% bouncing around. So that was the goal of this one. So next slide, please. So again, the tiers themselves, the proposed tiers, they stay the same as under Option A. We've got the same percentage of water use by tier as we had in Option A. But the unit costs are going to be different through 2024 through 2028 to provide, again, to provide a little bit easement, a little bit of easement to those customers so that they have more predictability in developing their budgets going forward, which was something we heard from the stakeholder groups as we met with them. So next slide, please. So again, this is a representation of how the bills would be affected based on Option C for multifamily and RV parks. Next slide. So then just a quick recap there. So Option A, that was our update to your existing rate structure based on cost of service and a conservation signal. And then Option C was to smooth out the increases for multifamily and RV parks. Next slide. So we always give this disclaimer. I'm sure you've heard me give it several times now, but we can't exactly do an apples-to-apples comparison between where you're at, where Kingman's at, where Bullhead's at, where Epcor's at, for all the various reasons that we've got up here, the size of the facilities, the customer base, the age of assets, how much are you reinvesting into your system? So all of those take into account the rates that we're going to be looking at on the next slide. So looking at a single-family monthly water bill, 3/4-inch meter and 900 cubic feet a month. So you can see where you're at currently, Lake Havasu City at the far-left side there at $15.98. For single-family, we only had the one option that we were looking at, Option A. So the proposed bill would go up to $20.72. Kingman, that reflects their most recent change to their rate structure. Bullhead City has an asterisk. They're undertaking a rate study right now, but we're not far enough along to know what potential changes there's going to be to theirs. And then we've got Epcor in the gold slash yellow there. So Lake Havasu City customers that are served by Epcor as opposed to the city itself, they're at $50.40 a month compared to the $15.98 or $20.72 for city customers. So next slide, please. So this was a new slide since we met last time. So this is looking at a multifamily customer. So the multifamily monthly water bill, so a 3/4-inch meter and 900 cubic feet. So this is assuming that it's one unit in this multifamily. So that $9.02 base charge is being factored into this. In reality, a multifamily complex, they would probably be sharing that $9.02. But for this graph, we assumed one dwelling unit in the multifamily complex. So again, you can see Lake Havasu City current at the far-left at $22.25. And then Option A and Option C, for the first year, the rate's the same. So it would increase to $22.99 for that customer there. And then Epcor, the Lake Havasu, again, they're another customer, they're another provider that does not distinguish between multifamily and single-family rates. So the 50-40 is the same for both single-family and multifamily with a 3/4-inch meter and 900 cubic feet. So with that, we're at sewer. So I can either pause here and address questions on water or we can run through sewer, whatever council's preference is.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Burnett. Do you want to just move on to sewer and then we can talk about it in whole? Do you want to talk about water separate?
Can I just ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
What exactly is the single-family irrigation?
So, single-family irrigation, that was a case in the past where customers would have a domestic meter, if you will, and then they'd have a separate meter just for the irrigation. So it was a single-family customer with two meters. One did irrigation, then one did domestic water use. So that's, the single-family irrigation would be that second meter that some customers installed.
And I only ask because I still have one of those.
Okay.
And I know, for example, so now basically if you use over 800 units on that, so if I have that thing turned on, over 800 units, I'm going to pay $5 a unit. But if I shut that off and reconnect my other one, I can leave my water on to over 10,000 and I'm only paid $2.70. So that does seem a little, are we trying to get people off those meters? Is that why we're doing that? Because I mean, it doesn't sound like, you know, I can still use the same amount of water. I just have to use it from this switch and not this switch. So it kind of, is there a reason for that, that we're?
Just in the sense that we looked at what the data was telling us. And for the irrigation meters, there is that higher peaking factor because they're not being used year-round. So that increased the cost for the cost of serving the irrigation meters as we looked at the analysis. A refinement could be for us to go back and blend the two of them together, to your point, because if you're using more water but only on the one meter, you're paying less.
Okay. Because I mean, if it was me, I would just put it back in the normal and then you use it like everybody else does. So okay, I was just curious what that was. So thank you.
Yeah, just for clarification, so you'd be paying that $2.44 time per 100 cubic feet. So those numbers, these are numbers are all per 100 cubic feet. So up to $10,000, then the rate would go up beyond that.
Yeah, but for the irrigation, if you use anything over 800, it goes to $5.02.
Yes, right.
So it just seems like a huge, I think it would eliminate all of those in the community if that happens.
Sure. Yeah, perfect.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on water before I move on to sewer and then we can talk about it in whole? All right, Mr. Burnett, let's move on to sewer.
All right. So again, we've got two options that we're looking at for sewer. So Option A, we kept that in place. So that was, again, the cost of service update to your existing rate structure. Based on the feedback that we heard from the stakeholders groups, we're moving away from the water-based charge associated with the sewer flow and it's just going to be a flat monthly charge regardless of what your discharge is into the sewer system. And that's for single-family and multifamily. And then all other classes, we're continuing with a base charge and a flow charge updated based on their cost of service. So next slide, please. So, single-family and multifamily, under this scenario, would pay the same rate. So currently, single-family has a base charge of $52.14 and a flow rate of $1.76. That includes the first 500 cubic feet of discharge. And then there's a cap, a monthly cap, on what single-family customers can pay. And that cap is at $56.54. So those that are hitting the max right now would see a bit of a decrease in their bill going forward. Those who are using less than the cap would see a little higher bill or a little less bill going forward as well. So on the multifamily side, so again, we've got the monthly base charge per unit right now. So again, this is per unit as opposed to water where we're saying it was per meter. So in this case, a multifamily complex with 10 units would pay 10 times the $18.67 base charge. And then we've got a flow rate of $6.26 per 100 cubic feet. Again, the first 500 cubic feet is included in that base charge. And then the monthly cap or monthly max, if you will, is $39.95. Going forward, it would be the $52.14 and no-flow component so that single-family and multifamily were the same. Next slide, please. So again, a similar look at what our comparison entities are doing between single-family and multifamily. So Avondale, there's no difference. On Bullhead City, if you're a single-family or multifamily, up to four dwelling units, you pay $36.26. If there's more than four units being served, it's a base charge of $47.96 per meter plus $3.70 per 1,000 gallons of discharge. Yuma, there's no difference. Buckeye, $28.86 base for single-family, $19.12 for multifamily. So it's about 66% of what the single-family base is. But then on the discharge side, so it's $2 per 1,000 gallons for single-family. And you're about 26% higher on the multifamily side at $2.51 per 1,000 gallons of discharge. Flagstaff and Morana, no difference. On Kingman, the base charge is the same regardless of whether you're a single-family or multifamily. But you're about 4% higher on the discharge side, the flow base. No difference on Goodyear, no difference on Prescott. For Casa Grande, similar to Bullhead City, it's up to four units, it's $33.70. And then each additional unit above four would be charged $20.96 per unit. Next slide. So then on the commercial side, so as I said, we're sticking with the existing rate structure. So there's a monthly base charge and a flow component. So only multifamily and single-family have the caps. So there's no cap or no monthly maximum that commercial customers would pay. Same for hotels. It's a base charge per room. And then the flow rate, again, no cap or no monthly maximum for commercial or hotels. Next slide. On RV parks, it's a base charge per space. So the current $9.34 going up to $9.81. So the current $9.34 going up to $9.81. And then a flow rate with no max on that. And then septic colors, right now, there's no base charge, there's strictly a volume component, a flow rate. So we've kept that consistent going forward. We're not, we're not proposing to add a base charge to septic colors, just stick with the existing flow rate basis. Next slide, please. So this is the same type of chart that we saw on the water side, but it's on sewer. So how the different customers would be impacted. So, single family had greater impact on the water side, single family has lower impact on the, on the sewer side, multifamily had less impact on the water side, more impact on the sewer side, and then commercial and hotel, they're about, they're in about the same place on the water side and the sewer side. Next slide, please. So option C was a phase in approach. So we looked at a phase in again on this one. So in this case, we've carved out, carved out single family and multifamily. On the water side, we carved out multifamily and RV parks. So the idea over on this one was to ask multifamily to go from the $18 base charge right now up to 52 is a big jump. So we wanted to try and smooth that out over the five-year period. So, single family monthly bill goes up incrementally higher every month in order to allow multifamily customers to phase in over time and get there more gradually as opposed to overnight. So, next slide, please. So here we have, so multifamily or a single family, excuse me, at the 5214 going up to 5961, so a little bit higher than we had under option A. And then multifamily going from 1867 up to 28, up to 3947. So again, it's a little bit more of an incremental jump as opposed to going right from the 1867 up to $52 right away. So, next slide, please. So again, this is how the customers would be impacted under this approach. So, single family staying the same, multifamily eases the burden a little bit for multifamily customers to go in with the phased in approach. Next slide, please. So then the summary again, so option A being the update to the existing cost of service with the flat rate change to single family and multifamily, and then option C being the phased in approach. So, next slide, please. So again, the disclaimer that we have on the water side, we also, we also have on the sewer side, it's hard to get that apples to apples comparison. So the one specific item that we have there is Lake Havasu City has 49 lift stations as opposed to the two or three for Kingman, which isn't too far down the road. So, just bearing that in mind as we look at the comparisons. So, we're looking at the single family here, so a single family monthly sewer bill at 700 cubic feet. So, the current, they would fall into that category where they were paying the base charge and some volume. 500 cubic feet is included in the minimum, so they'd be paying 200 cubic feet of a flow charge on that. So they're at 5566. If we were to go with option A or C, they would see a little bit of a decrease in their bill to 5214. But they're still staying within their relative lane, if you will, compared to, to your neighbors. Next slide. So a similar type of presentation for, for multifamily. So you can see the Lake Havasu City current at 700 cubic feet, so 3119. Again, we've got the asterisks on Bullhead City, they're looking at their sewer rates as well as their water rates, but again, we're not far enough to know where they're going to go. And then where, where multifamily customers fall in the spectrum is dependent upon which option you choose. So going with the option A, the 5214, that would move them from where they're at now to the top half of the graph, to go with option C, the, the phasing approach, that would take them down from where you're at today to leapfrogging Avondale and being at the lower end of the, of the, of the range there. So with that, that's all I had as formal presentation and happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Let me go back just a little bit of why we're even having this conversation. I think sometimes it's important that we get so deep into it, why this is even occurring. But back in the days before Lake Havasu City was incorporated, Mr. McCulloch set up an irrigation and drainage district that created a fund that was funded by taxpayers on your property tax bill. And that was put in in the 60s when Lake Havasu City incorporated in 1978 by a vote of the voters that was supposed to go away. However, that had debt from the original sewer infrastructure that was installed down in the Swanson Smoke Tree, that, that first track of neighborhoods. It still had debt, councils long before us would refinance that debt because it contributed to $5.7 million in tax revenue, property tax revenue that was paid to offset the water fund. When the debt was completely expired, we expired the IDD in 2021. And now everyone that received their property tax bill saw a decrease in their property tax bill. So if you have a mortgage, you might've got a rebate check from, from your S girl on that, or if you are paying your, your taxes directly, you would have seen a decrease of the IDD to the tune of $212 or so, depending on the size of the property that, that you own. So we started these discussions back in 2020 about how to, how to do this. And we did a rate structure that identified an increase based on cost of service delivery. So, based on a single family house, a multifamily house, a restaurant, hotel, hospital, all of the different uses, how would they pay? And they would pay on a cost of, of delivery. When we implemented that, we realized that it created some issues for HOAs, and the HOAs weren't able to absorb those, all that same, same cost. So council in October of '21 adopted a rate structure that alleviated some of that pain point as we waited for one year of seasonality built into the system. The rates, and we know this because of history, in Lake Havasu City are really dependent on, on the, the water users use the water based on the rates in which they pay. And so we wanted to get one year of full seasonality that we would have with our winter homeowners, our summer homeowners, our visitation, everyone that comes into place and see what the water usage does based on the rates that we do that. So, some of you may remember, we had winter quarterly averaging several years ago. It was very complicated, but it drove, it drove behaviors of ratepayers to the tune that they would take a shower at the gym and they went to shower at home for, for those three months to try and lower their overall sewer rates for the whole year. We got rid of that and that complication during this process, but we know that based on rate structures, it drives uses. Since then, obviously, we, we have the discussions with the Colorado River and the drought issues that the entire Southwest is feeling. So the council, in our first discussion about this, we said, hey, let's really have a focus on conservation. Conservation is, is really important to us. We need to address that, and we also need to have all options, and we need to have more community outreach. So we had multiple community outreach. This is the second, third time, it's in front of council this time. We also had a public open house, and over 35 people attended. 32 of those folks represented HOAs or multifamily housing. So we were able to get some good feedback, got great feedback from city staff that actually does the billing and, and how that comes across based on all of the customers' questions and comments that we get on a monthly basis. And what we're taking a look at, and a part of the conversation we didn't have tonight, but we've had several times before, is that our system is a nonprofit system. So it's a, it's an enterprise fund that the ratepayers pay for the costs of that. And we take multiple components into it. We have operation and maintenance that's involved. We took a 10-year look at capital improvements to ensure that we are investing properly in the infrastructure and what those needs would look like, and then any capital discussions. When you look at some of the comparisons that you saw to other cities, water were on the very low end as you compare to comparable cities. Sewer were a little bit higher, but we also had one of the, at the time, it was the largest municipal bonding to, to actually pay for the sewer. So we still have sewer debt that we're paying for, and that's a portion of the sewer bill each of us play. And so what we're trying to do is find an opportunity where everyone is paying a fair rate and we're being good conservators of water. We know Lake Havasu City residents historically have been great users of water. We are using less water today than we are, did in the 90s with a huge increase in population. And that's based on, on some of these systems that are in place, the rate structures, and just citizens' ability in Lake Havasu City to do what's right for our community as a whole. We have examples of that all over the place. So, that's a little bit of, of history on why we're there, what we're doing, and why we're even having this conversation. But with that, now there's some things we need to unpack as a council to give staff and, and Mr. Burnett a good direction on, on what's coming next. So, I'll open it up to my colleagues on the council for any questions, comments, thoughts on, on the direction that you would like to see based on option A, on A and C for both Councilmember Dolan?
If you guys don't mind, I'd like to say something. I just have a couple of questions. I'm a little concerned about the commercial rates. They're very high if you look at, you know, per, for the meter you're looking at, the base is $48 and the single family's 52. But when you look at the, the volume rate, it's $10.44 per volume, where then single family is zero. And so, I mean, I understand it, I guess the question is, you know, for a lot of these commercials, you know, industrial in town and stuff that use, you know, what am I thinking? The swamp coolers, there's no way, you know, they're paying a lot to run that swamp cooler. Irrigation, unless you're on a separate meter at irrigation, you're also paying a lot for that. So it does seem like the commercial side of it is heavily, I guess the question is what makes the commercial sewer more expensive to process in our system than say a residential or a hotel or? So what's the reason why commercial is so high compared to, I guess, the other areas? Would be my question.
So, the mayor mentioned the cost of service aspect of this. So one of the things that we did in looking at the cost of service, specifically on the sewer side, was we're looking at the volume of discharge that goes into the sewer system for the different customer classes, the number of customers by customer class, and also the strength of the wastewater discharge, so the contaminants within the discharge itself. So, single family, multifamily customers are what we consider domestic strength dischargers. So it'll be anywhere between 125 and 250 pounds per liter of discharge. Some commercial customers are going to fall in that range. If you have like a real estate office, they're going to, their discharge is going to be domestic strength. But you also have restaurants with grease traps, so they're not going to be in that 125 to 150, they could be 500, 600 pounds per, per liter. So, part of what we've done here, when we did the study initially, there were multiple single, or multiple commercial classes. You had bakeries were a class, gyms were a class, grocery stores were, we found that to be cumbersome last time around, so we consolidated it. So now we have one commercial class except for hotels, hotels have been carved out separately. So, the commercial rate is higher because you've got that blending of all the different types of commercial customers, and it's taking an average of their strength discharge. So that's what's going into the cost of service and why the, the flow rate is so much higher for the commercial class.
Okay. Just to weigh in, that'd be something I might like to see in the future is, I mean, I know we had so many classes, if you're a bakery, or you're this, or you're that, but, you know, to go from all of that just down to one does seem a little extreme, and maybe we could add a few more classes in there to separate some of those real estate, some of those lighter usages. As far as I think, if I understand, the option C on water, so the main difference of that is the, was it the RV parks and the hotels?
RV parks are multifamily.
So multifamily, so they still have the same, it's just to give them the predictability of what the rate's going to be over time, but it's still, does it, does it charge them more in the long run, or does it charge them roughly the same? It's just trying to be spaced out.
So we're getting, we're getting to the same endpoint, it's just how we get there. So it's a little bit of a smoother transition from year one to year five as opposed to a bigger jump in one year and then a lower jump in the next year. It's going to be an even incremental to get to the same point in year five.
Okay. So with that, as far as a consensus, just for me to speak, I, I could lean towards A or option C for water. As far as the sewer, I don't know, I think I'm still option A. I still have an issue with the multifamily not paying their fair share of, you know, two people in an apartment versus two people in a, in a house. You are, we are subsidizing the, the people in the condo. And now, I, I know I don't necessarily think it's 100% would be that, that number. You know, definitely, we're, we're checking less meters, we're, you know, there is some level of difference, maybe it's 80, 80%, 75%. I'd consider something in that area. But to be at half, I think we've given them the time to adjust, you know, and I, I understand people that are here three or four months out of the year, you know, I, but my, my biggest concern is the people that are here year-round and are using that under 500 that are, you know, trying to pay their bills. I don't want them to have to subsidize people that are in a condo that are, you know, only here for three or four months out of the year, you know, on a second home. So, so in that case, I am for option A for sewer, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Dolan. Any other councilmembers? Councilmember Campbell?
Of course. Councilmember Dolan, I do agree with you on the commercial rates, that they do seem kind of high considering, and I'd love to see an ex, a couple of extra categories placed in there. Again, for the multifamilies, you guys have heard me over and over again, one thing we have a problem with in this community is affluent a lot of it. So, I still find it interesting when we say, oh, it'd still cost you the same if you're in a condo, and look at some of these small multifamilies, they're popping up all over the community, which means more revenues are going to be heading our way. I mean, if, as soon as we start filling those multifamilies up, I think we've had more multifamilies built in this last year or two than we've ever had. So, again, a lot of people that move into multifamilies, they're trying to get away from the high expenses of owning a home and a pool and air conditioning bill, because sometimes that's where their, their life is taking them. They're selling their homes and they're moving there. I cannot believe that it costs the city the same amount of money to manage a multifamily as it would a single family. And if we wanted to really be dial things down, is if you have a casita, now are you multifamily? Because you're kind of saying the same thing. So, as you know, I would rather see at least a 75% reduction because if they are only here part-time, we're not using with, using the mass, having to deal with injection wells and a lot of extra costs for the city, because if you're not using it, you're not using it. So it's not just one side or the other. Also, as you know, you just bring one sewer pipe up to a resident, and all of the property has to be responsible for the pipes that are within that, including all the, everything, everything. So, I'm going to continue to be an advocate for the HOAs. I really think that we should dial it down to about 65%. I don't know what happens to the other categories. Again, I don't know where we're at at this point, but this concept that single family homes are the same as condos, even if you do the basic residential, if you look at your housing study, you know that's not true, that the average single home in Lake Havasu City, I believe, is 2.75 people or something like that versus a condo. I, I personally witnessed it, and I saw many, many singles living within a condo complex, and their intention is to not, to get away from the high dollar housing. And they're giving up a lot because they're shared spaces and all of that. They've chose a lifestyle change for a reason. So, to continue to say that a single family person with, including my children, who have three kids, a dog, a cat, a swimming pool and the whole, you know, they take the long showers, cannot even remotely compare to the class of citizens that I lived near for six years in a condo complex. It's a completely different world. And as for the hotels, I think the hotel rates are too low. And the reason why I say that is because most people that I know that rent a hotel room, they get their linens cleaned every week, they have open public bathrooms, they have big swimming pools, and I see that the use, the flow rates are even lower than commercial. I almost think that needs to be the other way around because I know a lot of hotels, I'm going to just, I won't give any names, but I know a lot of hotels that have a lot of public bathrooms, they have a lot of linen washing every day, they have all these things going on that condos and single family homes do not have, including very large pools. A lot of times they have commercial restaurants, they have, you know, they have bars, restaurants, all mixed in there. So is that, when you do that, is that per room, plus then it goes into a different commercial rate if they have a, like a restaurant or a bar as well? How does that work? Or is it just one rate with the?
Originally, there were different hotel categories. So we again collapsed them into one hotel category this time around. So if there is a restaurant or a hotel without a restaurant, they're in the same class right now.
See, to me, I, I personally think that the hotels should be paying at least, if not more than most of our local commercials here in this community. Because again, I see a lot of outside public use. I mean, I, I'm guilty of it too. I run into, you know, you, you have lots of friends over, and most of the time, those hotel rooms are packed with either two, three, four people, occupancies are high. So, there's my, there's my take.
So do you have a, a preference on options that we have in front of us on the water, option A or C? And then sewer, do you have a preference on an option?
If we dug down and actually got these, A or C doesn't really matter. If we just got it right from the get-go, I feel a lot better about it. So one would be, the hotels obviously need to be paying more of their fair share, especially on flow rates. I think commercials should come down. I definitely think multifamily should come down, and it seems like the, it's not a big jump for the residential at this point. So it seems like who we're hitting the hardest right now is multifamily. Multifamily is taking it super hard in, and I just don't think it's fair considering we're trying to encourage workforce housing and building smaller spaces, and investors are doing this, and in the meantime, we're just hitting them with the highest rates. And those HOAs are having to pay for everything within their community. It's almost, I explained it to somebody the other day. They said, well, why would I have to, as a residential, have to pay more than the condo or a multifamily? I said, well, that's almost like, everybody on your street has to repair all the underground water. water and everything, all this, all the, uh, pipes and infrastructure up to, for the whole neighborhood. And every time a neighborhood pipe breaks, the neighborhoods have to come together and write a check to the city to get it fixed. So that's the way I feel. I've been a strong advocate for the HOAs from the get-go and all I have in front of me is we're just gonna, nobody listened to me. So I'm going to try one last time to try and be heard, but let's see how this goes. But the hotel, everybody also told me they don't think that the, they think out-of-town visitors should picking up the price here. I hear on a busy, busy weekend, I understand our public works has some difficulties with some affluence and some other problems. That's not our locals, that's not our residentials, that's not our part-time, part-time multifamily or full-time multifamily. So that's the end of my, um, soapbox and I'm done.
Okay, thank you. The, just, just for the record on the commercial side, there's, uh, the commercial side has a, uh, option A on the sewer, uh, zero to five percent, uh, would be getting a hundred percent of our customers would be getting a zero to five percent increase. On the hotel side, uh, there would be, uh, five to fifteen percent, uh, of, uh, increase for ninety-one percent. So the hotels are going up. I mean, that's, they're, they're actually, they're, they're the ones that are taking the brunt of, of this, this rate study from this perspective that's in front of us right now, just so that we have that from the presentation. Mr. Knutson, do you have a comment?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you. Um, we've had a couple, a couple of these meetings, uh, for a couple of years now, right? And, uh, this, this last, um, uh, effort to take a look at the rates, we, we started the very first work session or the very first, uh, agenda, uh, talking about capital projects and the cost of the system. So I just wanted to make sure that we, we're also thinking about not just the, the rates, right? Now it's real easy to focus just on the rates, on what, what, what's being paid and how we lower this one or what that looks like. But we started off with identifying over the course of ten years, what, what, uh, projects need to take place? Uh, what, how much, how many miles of sewer line do we need to, to, um, uh, replace or repair? Uh, how many miles of water, uh, main and laterals do we need to repair or replace? What kind of improvements do we need to do with our water treatment plant? What kind of improvements do we need to do with our three wastewater treatment plants? Um, all of the, uh, the, the vehicles and, and, uh, individuals and personnel and all the part of the team on the water and wastewater side that are out there at three o'clock in the morning fixing a, uh, a, a water break or sewer break when that takes place? So that's where we started. We identified what is the cost of the system? We just want to break even. We want to, we want to identify what the cost is to operate a nonprofit water system. What's the cost to, to operate a nonprofit sewer system? And so that's kind of where we started and then as we get, identify that number, we get into like the, the rates and where we're at. So now when we, we start talking about the rates, it's really important to have, uh, some, uh, perspective and provide some feedback because we're going to be coming back to council in, in one month, uh, asking for final adoption of the rates. So, um, the direction that we're hoping to get a little tonight and, uh, and at the, uh, the, the hearing, uh, next month will have a little bit to do with like where does this, where's this, where's this at? What I mean by that is that if we want to lower, um, this rate by a certain amount, that means we either get rid of a project or we raise somebody else's rate. So in, in that, and I just want to make that's out there. So we're talking about doing adjustments. We have to make sure that we, we have to see where the other, where the others, where the other, uh, head pops up at. Um, Kevin, I know that you did some analysis on, and we asked you to, to identify that number, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we, so we said if we had the multifamily sewer rate and seventy-five percent of what the single-family, um, residents pay within Lake Havasu City, what does that impact per month to that single-family, that homeowner in Lake Havasu City? And it's about what, five dollars and change? Is that?
Roughly, yes.
Okay, so a little over five dollars per month is what the single-family would, um, ratepayer would pay if multifamily was charged seventy-five percent of the single-family rate. So just kind of, so five dollars and change, call it fifty-five, sixty bucks a year is, is what that looks like. So, um, kind of, I would just, that's just a number to throw out there that we're talking about. So we go up a little bit or down a little bit, that number obviously adjusts. And we're talking about flowing commercial rate, where do we raise it at? Um, maybe there's another classification of commercial that, that we raise it at? What does that look like? So anytime we're talking about adjusting rates, where does it pop up on the other side? So that, that's a good, or which project do we eliminate out of, out of the, out of the CIP, um, or any operational costs that, that are required to, to run the system? So just want to put that in perspective, take us all back that very first meeting when we had a list of projects on the screen and this is what it takes to operate a, a nonprofit water system and a nonprofit sewer system. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Knutson.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I, I guess I'm not done. Mr. Knudsen, didn't you just build a casita? I think you should get two bills. That will help. I'm using that as the example. What the heck difference is it? If you're renting out a casita in the backyard, what's the difference between that and a duplex as far as I'm concerned? And the other thing, Merry Christmas, everybody, because your bill's coming in December.
Hey, Councilmember Campbell, that, that is a little inappropriate. So to, to assume, to assume that Mr. Knudsen is renting out his casita is, is not, yeah, it's.
Not say that. I said he has one. I said he has one.
There's, there's many homes in our community that enjoy casitas for, for many different uses, but, uh, Mr. Knudsen, I don't know if you have a comment to that or?
No, I just, just to say that, yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I don't want any special treatment. So whatever the council decides in terms of rates, I'm, I'm willing to pay. Um, I have, I'm a single dad. I got two small boys at home. Um, that's my household. And then I got a casita that's, I built in the backyard that my sister and brother-in-law built when they're, because they're snowbirds. So, yeah, that's my situation and I'm willing to pay what other people pay.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So these are public hearings and we're going to hear from the public. Mr. Knudsen, you took some of the stuff that I was going to say, so, um, I'm going to reiterate some of the stuff here. One of the things I, I want the, the public to look at and I want to hear from the public between now and the end of next month when we adopt these rates, this is a nonprofit system. When you looked at the, the graph there, you saw on the water side, you saw Epcor, uh, Lake Havasu and I, if Anthony or Patrick, whoever can go back to that slide, um, you can see the difference in the cost to, to bring water to your home. There you go. So if you look at that yellow line, that's Epcor. That's the people that live in Lake Havasu, but not within the city limits of Lake Havasu. They live out there by Lowe's and that area, um, across the highway from, from the Dodge dealership and the places in Lake Havasu that are not in the city, they are not served by Lake Havasu City water. We own our water company. We're nonprofit. So you look at what we're paying right now or what our, our residents are paying at fifteen dollars and ninety-eight cents because we're nonprofit. We don't want to make money. If we make money, we're going to have to lower the rates, which is appropriate. If we have not enough money, we have to raise the rates. And what do we do with these rates for our water? When you turn that faucet on, you want good, fresh water that's been treated to come into your house. What does it cost to do that? You don't have to look very far from right here in Lake Havasu, our, our surrounding areas to see who's on bottled water and who does not have good water coming into their system in the county area. You know, we had to cancel our fire contract with Down and Donkey Acres because their water infrastructure would fail if we hooked up to it or possibly fail. We couldn't put that on our citizens. Uh, just across the lake, they're on bottled water. I don't know if they still are, but for a year they were. I just read an article in the paper the other day where a municipality is telling their citizens boil the water. We didn't keep the system up, boil the water. So we have to keep that system up and this is what we're saying it's going to cost. We looked at what is this system going to cost, I believe Mr. Knudsen said, over the next ten years? And that's how we determine the rate. We, we go backwards from there. What projects is it going to take? So what revenues do we have to raise? These are the revenues that we will have to raise and this is what it costs everybody to, um, bring that in. Then we go to the sewer rates. Fifty percent of our sewer rates are debt services, the mayor said. We have to pay that debt. We have an excellent bond rating. If that bond rating drops, that affects all other issues when it comes to money that belongs to the taxpayers. So we have to make sure we, we maintain that bond rating. When it comes to multifamily versus single-family sewer rates, and that's where most of the issue seems to arise and where, um, some of my colleagues and I have very different opinions. I say if you live in a house and you have two people or four people that live in a house, how much wastewater are you putting into the sewer? If you have two people living in a condominium, whether you got two people or four, a family of four, living in a condominium, the wastewater that goes into the system is the same. You're taking the same amount of showers, you're flushing the toilet the same, you're washing the same amount of dishes, you're doing the same amount of laundry. So why do the people that live in a house pay fifty-four dollars and the people that live in a condo pay eighteen dollars? That is not fair and that's the way it's been here for twenty-five years. It's time to change that. So last year when we did this, I looked at that, I knew their rates were going to go up four-hundred percent. I saw that. And I said, yeah, their rates are going to go up four-hundred percent. That's going to hurt. But it's not four-hundred percent more than everybody else. It's the same as everybody else. They're now paying their fair share. So I didn't have a problem with it. The issue we had was, and I did not know this, nobody brought it up at any of the hearings we had, people that live in those condominiums or apartments don't pay their own water bill. And that hurt the HOAs because they didn't have a mechanism in order to be able to pay those higher rates. So as the mayor said, we gave a year of rights to, to let them catch up. So now they should have put some mechanisms, mechanisms in place, knowing that they were going to have to do that. So I'm for, for A on both because I think everybody needs to pay their, their fair share. As I said, these are, this is also a nonprofit system. What's it going to cost to run the system over the next ten years? Let's divide that out equally so that everybody's paying their fair share, whatever category they fall into. Everybody pays their fair share. What I'd like to hear from the public is if they feel that what there is, the, the rate that they're paying, why they feel it's not fair and who should pay it if they don't? And if they don't pay it and they don't think somebody else should pay it, well then the only other option is to cut some sort of service or not do some sort of maintenance or upgrades. What projects do you want us to cut out of the budget? So we're willing to do what the citizens of the city want. That's what we were elected for, to make these decisions and to do that. But let us know, hey, I shouldn't pay it, he should. Or I don't want to pay it, I don't want him to pay it, just don't fix those water pipes, just let them break. It's okay. That happens in other municipalities. You can see it every single day in the newspaper across this country of municipalities that don't take care of their infrastructure. Where I also differ from my colleague when we talk about the, the pipes to go under the ground, everything that's from the meter on is our responsibility. So if my water line breaks underneath my driveway, I got to fix it. If the water line breaks underneath the street inside a gated community on their side of the meter, they got to fix it. Plain and simple. If it breaks on the street where they're bringing the water down the street, we fix it. The city fixes it. If it breaks on going down the middle of my street, the city fixes it. It's the same for everybody. If you live on one of those houses, um, that's in the center of town, like over off of Popago that have those, they sit way up on the hill and they've got those big, long driveways and a water line breaks somewhere between the street and their house, they got to fix it. And they don't have twelve other people to, to put money into it to help pay for that. They got to pay for it themselves. So what I want to hear from the public, we're a nonprofit system. We don't make money. There's no, we, we have our budget that we have to have. If you don't think it's fair for the rate you're paying, who do you think should pay it or what project do you think we should cut out? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Lynn?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to go back and see some, um, classifications for the commercial also. I know that, um, this is my third term, so I know we discussed this a long time ago, but I have the same concerns with the swamp coolers and stuff and some of these businesses and all that water does is evaporates, doesn't go down the sewer, but we still get charged with that. Um, also with the hotels, there, I think the rate should be a little bit higher in there. Let's be honest, when we want vacation, we leave our water on, we leave our shower on, we have them wash towels every time. I mean, there's a lot in not subcategorizing whether there's a regular hotel with a restaurant and a pool to one that's just a hotel. I think we need to look at that. Um, with that, where do our VRBOs stand? Like, and what classification are they?
Yeah, so they would be their single-family home if that's what they are, or they would be multifamily if they're in a multifamily complex.
Okay. Is, is there a reason why? Because aren't we keeping track of that now?
State law. Yeah, so the state law doesn't allow us to change the category.
Okay. And with the multifamily and, um, the condos, I, I, I understand it paying the fair share, but I think we have to realize that a lot of people living in these multifamily units and condos, there are a lot of seniors that are on fixed income, um, we have our working poor that are living in there and we already have a lot of issues that we're struggling with, with social services here. And when we start raising people's water bills in those areas, and that's where they can only afford that rent in those areas, um, and now our, our electric bills are going to go up, I just don't want to see that strain on that population of people and what that looks like. So I'm not sure what, what I like with, with those options, but those were just some of thoughts I wanted to share.
Yeah, no, thank you for, for sharing. I, I do think we just need to talk about the initial concept that we, so we talked about doing it on conservation and cost of service. And that takes out all of this, I think hotels should pay for it, I think restaurants should pay for it, I think that houses on smoke tree only should pay for everything. It's the cost to deliver the service and there's no way to justify how the rates are set, uh, if you're just going to say, I think this one category needs to, to, to pay for that. That was, that was the reason we made those initial calls on the front end. Now we're seeing it in actual use is now we're saying, oh, well, I think this category should pay it. But that's why we gave the direction that conservation was important to us and cost of delivery, so that we didn't just pick that out. And I would venture to say I wasn't involved in the process, but back when we had thirty-five different categories for commercial, I would say that that was, uh, motivated by some politics and I don't think that that's what we want to do. If we're going to pay, have people pay what the cost to deliver the service to them is, that's the way we should stay with it. Uh, but obviously I, I, I'm open to that. When it comes to conservation, the, the challenge is we do have a lot of repair shops, uh, some restaurants that do have swamp coolers. It's really going to hurt our swamp cooler users. Uh, Mr. Kozlowski, you're working on a grant, um, through your, your division, uh, to help offset that where people can convert over to other, other options if you are prepared to talk a little bit about that.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we did, uh, at the previous meeting, our grants manager did submit a grants application to WIPA, uh, to provide additional rebate programs, uh, for swamp coolers, our turf rebate. So hopefully, uh, we are successful in that grant application and we can provide those services. And to Councilmember Lynn's point, uh, it wasn't included in this presentation, but in the previous one, for those residents who aren't on fixed incomes, there are state programs available for them too.
Thank you. All right. And then Councilmember Moses?
Can I ask a quick clarification question? Okay.
Can I ask a quick clarification question? Okay. So as we're going back and forth on the commercial and hotels and paying more, um, I just want to make sure that I understand this. So like, if we have a standalone McDonald's, they would pay $51.10 a month for that unit, and then $10.96 for their flow. If we had a hotel with 10 rooms, they would pay 10 times the 1876, so it would be 187.60 plus the $9.93. So I want to make sure I'm understanding. Are we saying that the the flow component is too low for commercial, or for, excuse me, for hotels compared to commercial? Or the overall big picture is too low for, um, commercial versus hotels?
Yeah.
Good question.
I can answer that with my opinion. I I I think the per unit is a little bit low when we look at, you know, what we're doing to with multifamilies. We're looking at putting them at, you know, we're saying a a unit in there is 50 something, but a unit in the hotel where there could be four people, five people staying in a room is 17.
Okay.
So I think maybe that is something that I, you know, I I think that that's my issue with it, with it being it. So. And then just to say, I guess my concern also with commercial is, you know, the cost, to me, the commercial kind of defines or defies the cost of delivery because it does seem so much higher than some than RV sites, for example, and the single family.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Lynn, did you have?
Yeah. Again, when you're talking about the hotels, and I just trying to get some clarification. So if you do have a hotel that has a restaurant in it or banquet or wherever in there, they are still classified as a hotel, not a restaurant.
Correct.
That's a really big difference, though, those rates. That's really big, because those, some of those hotels have, you know, some bigger restaurants in there. Okay.
Councilmember Moses?
Mayor, yeah, thank you. Um, well, I gotta be honest, I hate going after Councilman Lane, uh, because he steals a lot of my stuff. Uh, I see him over there looking at what I'm writing down. But, uh, I I I want to, I want to point out something is, the reason why we got an outside company to come tell us what we need to charge and how much it costs to bring to different businesses is because a lot of times up here, we all own businesses, right? We need an expert, a trusted expert to come in here and tell us what it, what it, what it costs to give to a business so that we can charge them or recoup those costs and do it at an appropriate rate where everybody's paying for what they use. Um, so to come and say that hotels need to pay a little bit more, um, because of the optics, you you don't really have a, don't really have a viable reason to make them pay more. Like, I I don't under, I don't understand that aspect of that. Just just for optics reasons, why? Um, we asked him to come and and do some certain things and clean up some of these things, and when he created the hotel category, I'm sure he took prices for hotels that have restaurants, and he took prices for hotels that have, that do not have restaurants, averaged them, and they come up with the best way forward. All of these things that we're talking about and coming up with of, this is how I feel, and this is what I think, and all these things. All of those go into an average that he comes up with, and he figures out for these different categories that we're stick with. So I don't see, I don't see the reason for charging any business, any business, more than what it costs to deliver the service to them. I don't see any reason for charging a home or a condo any different price, um, based on what it costs to bring it to their door and provide that services. We all need to pay, we we all need to pay our fair share. Um, this, the slide right up here is just case in point. We're we're not, we're not making money off any of this. You are paying 250% less than your neighbors on the north who are getting it from a for for profit company. Alls we need is for the water to turn on and the toilets to flush. And how do we do it? We charge for what it costs to bring it to your door. That's it. That's it. Everything else is just, I feel, I think. There's nothing behind it. So I'm, long story short, I'm for option A on both. Um, I think we've given enough time. Um, I don't think anybody will really do anything until they have to do something. Everybody I've talked to who manage or own, not own, who manage, um, multifamilies or big apartment complexes, saying their boards are just, they're not, they they won't do anything until it comes to their door. So um, in my mind, the longer we let them wait to make the, to make the change, it's just, they're going to end up paying more in the long run. We're all going to end up paying more in the long run while we let them have a little extra more free time, because our bills are still acting, still adding up. We're still going to have to get to some big number. We're just gonna, we're just deferring the cost to later. But we've already given an hour, a year and a half to get there. I don't think we should wait any longer.
Thank you, Councilmember Moses. Councilmember Coke?
Yeah, I'll I'll make it short. Um, I've made this comment prior in our prior meetings. I too, uh, when we made the vote, um, was under the impression there was going to be a large increase for multifamily. Um, when it came back to us, to the council, I admitted I've never lived in an HOA. And so I didn't understand the impact, so I was agreeable to giving some time for them to make adjustments, knowing that this was going to come back because we can't operate in a deficit. So I was completely supportive of that at the time, knowing that we were going to come back and giving that information to the people who needed it to say, look, this is inevitable, we're going to have to do something, we can't operate like this, but let's give you some time to plan ahead. Uh, the time is now, we're here. Uh, we've had, as the mayor said, multiple meetings, and so, um, I too am for option A on both. And I've made that, I've I've made that statement at multiple meetings, so I don't need to to go into more detail. Most of uh, my colleagues have made most of the the comments that I would have, so.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Coke for for that. Um, so we have, uh, four folks that takes it to to option A for water and sewer. I would prefer, um, I I'm good with option A for for water, that that's not a problem. Sewer, I do think phasing it in for multifamily, I I still support that, but, uh, the, since we have four votes, which is what it takes to to pass this, um, I would at least encourage us to defer the implementation for multifamily to January 1st. That way their new annual budget can be adopted and with these correct rates. Uh, they're, I would assume they're on a calendar year. I don't know that to be true, uh, but I would encourage that to, um, be the implementation date for multifamily. The rest of them going into effect then on November 1. We will, yeah. Yeah. Any any thoughts for members of council on that? All right. Well, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Christine Murray. I live up on Colt Drive. And I was inspired by your invitation, Mr. Lane, and your comments, uh, Mr. Moses, to speak in support of Ms. Campbell's remarks. You suggested we integrate multiple family dwellings to single family residence rates because it's fair, because they take the same number of showers, the same number of toilet flushes. Well, the hotels, whether a 10 unit or 100 unit, take a lot more showers and toilet flushes. So why aren't we just evening the rates for citizens or visitors? We're flushing their toilets. It costs us all the same.
Hello, David Diaz at 3700 Amberjack Bay. Um, is the the grant that Mr. Kozlowski was talking about, is that, is that the grant that was noted in that, not this Sunday, but last Sunday's, uh, 293 million dollar grant? Is that the grant we're talking about?
Uh, no, same council meeting, but different grant.
Okay. Um, is that grant, if that comes through, uh, because it says for water infrastructure, is that going to alleviate some of the costs or or upkeep and maintenance? Is that, is that what that grant's going to be used for?
Uh, the 290 million grant would be a secondary water treatment plant, and that potentially could take monies away from our capital improvement that we wouldn't have to expend, which means that future rate increases as calculated.
Would be affected lower?
Correct.
Gary Nickerson, Kiowa Boulevard. I don't quite understand a couple of things. I heard you say that the BMBs were protected by the state. Does that mean, no matter what waste they put in, what or what, how much water they use, they're protected by the state?
No, if they're a single family home, they would be, and it's an Airbnb, they would pay the single family rates. If it was a multifamily, they would pay multifamily rates. So the what state law protects them from is we can't call them something different and charge them a different rate than what they are.
Okay. Um, the one next door to me has 10 people can be there every night. Why aren't they paying the same as the motels and the commercial? They're basically a commercial, right?
You are speaking to the choir. We we agree with you, but state law, uh, precludes us, but the one saving grace on that is, uh, by going on a conservation method, uh, 10 users are going to pay a whole lot more than one user. And so, uh, it it spreads it across. We've had some folks.
Well, I just, yeah, I was listening to the council member say that it's the cost of getting it in. He didn't say anything about the waste being used. So he missed that.
There's a water side and there's a wastewater side.
Right, right, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're right. Words matter. The cost of using and the cost of disposing, everybody needs to pay the same. I've been an advocate for treating Airbnbs and VRBOs a little bit different my entire life. Um, for as long as I've been around them, that's a hotel. I would love to charge commercial rates. I think a lot of people would. If you want to run a business in a residential area, that's not right. But okay, we'll look the other way, but run it like a business, be inspected and all that stuff. City, the the city can't do anything about it. You need to talk to your, our representatives, Leo Biasucci and Sunny Barelli, so that, uh, so we can get some things exchanged.
But aren't you guys in charge of the water, not the state? So why can't the water be? I'm I'm missing what you're saying, I guess.
We we love what you're saying. Yeah. If you go tell the people down in Phoenix that make the laws, that would be fantastic. We we advocate for local control. So, yeah, you can't, can't yell out, uh, Ms. Murray, but, uh, the, uh, we advocate for that all of the time, but that's just not an option that we have right now. So, uh, yeah, this is about our utility rates, but not, uh, not the states. Yeah. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item?
Hi, Rebecca Lisca. I live on Colt Drive, um, also own a business in town, a couple. Uh, my only question is about the, uh, commercial usage all being the same, because obviously, I'm I'm wondering, is it the cost of the sewer that is, because that's the base, and then we all pay the same water amount on top based on usage, which is fair. But the cost coming in, I'm wondering how that's fair for the different levels of commercial businesses based on, say, restaurants versus, I own an upholstery business, we use very little water, but we do use swamp coolers. Uh, but my bill does not fluctuate, uh, versus summer versus winter. I pay within $50 about the same water bill at my shop, which is about three times my water bill at my house, um, which I find interesting since we're a business that doesn't really use water. So that's kind of what I'm wondering, why everybody that's going to be based as having a commercial is going to wind up being the same.
Sure. Yeah. So the commercial rates being the same are actually, that's what's happening right now. So that went into effect in October of 2021. So you will be impacted with, uh, with a swamp cooler. Swamp cooler uses a lot of water. Um, and that's what we were talking about, uh, with Mr. Kozlowski, about, uh, having grant opportunities for you to convert to AC or something else.
I did hear that, and I will look into that outside of the meeting.
Yeah, but that's currently what's happening now.
So they're not looking at breaking that up any differently. We're talking about it from this point on, being looked at the same regardless of the type of business that you have.
Yeah, but like I said, that change happened with the rates as of October of 2021. So it's what you've already been paying for the last year and a half. That's how it's done. Um, and like I said before, we had like 35 different rate categories, uh, that made it very, very complicated for the different rate payers to understand how they can manage their water and manage their actual monthly bill. And that's why we converted to that about a year and a half ago.
Okay, I just wanted some clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else like to address the city council on this item?
Good evening, and honorable mayor and city council. My name's Jason Hart, and I am the president of the Los Lagos Vista's Board of Directors, which is a five-board membership. Uh, we have approximately 224 condo units at our facility, as well as seven townhouses. And for those who aren't familiar, we're located on the south side of this city. My understanding is we are the largest HOA in the city, and we have been here, uh, the longest, at 44 years. Um, due to the background of board members, including myself, we understand the the need to maintain, uh, sewer and water, and how important that is. Uh, just to give you a little bit of idea, we have approximately 7,000 lineal feet of sewer and water that we maintain beyond the the city, uh, meter. We've had six breaks this year on our water alone, which we've brought in tiger trenching at about $6,000 a pop. So we're paying our fair share in terms of, or we understand the cost of of maintaining and fixing, and it's important. Uh, and and looking at the proposed rates, we're are concerned about the water increases, but not so much as we are concerned about the sewer rate increases. For us, an increase of $52.14 from the current 1867 is, uh, $7,600 a month pop for us that we're going to have to encrue. We have, uh, quite a few residents that are elderly, that are single on fixed incomes. Um, but we understand that 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 this needs to happen, and 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 as a board, we support the increase, but what we would like to see is a phasing approach on the sewer side. So that would really help us out. Um, Mr. Lane, you pointed out, uh, Councilman Lane, about how HOAs had time to prepare. And we did do a initial increase in our fiscal year, which, um, honorable mayor, you pointed out. For us, it's January to December. So we did an increase last year. They had a lot, they allowed amount of what we're, what we're allowed to do without a vote, because we have 224 units. And and it was quite a battle that the board took, quite a beating for that. And we'll have to do it again, obviously, if we we continued, uh, in a drastic route with the option A that's being proposed. So thank you for taking this on, and we do understand the importance of maintaining our water and sewer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Councilmember Moses?
So there are also grants for elderly or low-income people through the state as well, correct? How would that work for an HOA that only gets one bill? Would that, would that still be a viable option that they would be able to pursue?
Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilmember Moses, I think if, uh, Kevin, is that, no? Okay. Yeah, no, we don't believe so.
Yeah, that would, that would be a difficult, uh, way to to cross over, but certainly something that to take into account. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item?
Oh, yes. Uh, you guys keep talking about grants for people who are lower income or seniors. I was just wondering how they get informed of that.
Yeah, great question. So, uh, any, uh, rate payer that calls into our customer service, uh, department, they would advise them of that if if they find themselves in that situation, uh, through the social media. And whatever the result is of of this rate, uh, implementation, uh, we will have a a communication strategy to let rate payers know and and property owners in our community that the rates will be changing. We can include that in that as well.
Okay, now, have the grants already been in existence? And was that not told to people already?
Yeah, so there's two different items. One, we applied, or we gave permission to apply for a grant at our last council meeting. That's the one to, um, move. Uh, uh, it's for water conservation. So as Mr. Kozlowski, uh, described, uh, turf repair, uh, converting over from, uh, uh, into air conditioners instead of using swamp coolers, those types of things. Then there's a state one that's already there, and yes, we do share that with with customers today if, uh, they call in and have an issue.
So the only way people are going to know that is if they have an issue and then feel brave enough to call you and go, hey, you know, I'm having an issue. I can't afford this. Otherwise, they won't know about it, correct?
No, that's that's one, that's one avenue. There's other avenues that, uh, they could go through to find that, but that's an avenue that we support through the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, to that point, as far as the grants that we're applying for, uh, condo associations could take advantage of their turf rebate program. So there's an option for that, for them to conserve some some of their water usage.
Yeah, thank you. Good point. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? All right, uh, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to, uh, council for any final discussion, uh, points. Uh, otherwise, I'll, um, ask Mr. Kozlowski, Mr. Knutson, do you have, uh, the information that you need, uh, from, uh, the council on this item?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, excellent. All right, uh, we will move on to the next agenda item. All right, item 7.2 is adopt ordinance number 23 dash 1316, declaring the document entitled 2023 Amendments to Lake Havasu City Code, Title V, to add a new chapter, 5.24, Mobile Food Vendors, August 22nd, 2023, a public record, and adopting by reference Mobile Food Vendor Regulations. Uh, good evening, Mr. Morris and Mr. Tunneman.
Honorable mayor, council members, thank you very much. Uh, we're here to, uh, talk about mobile food vendors, um, a little bit about the process we've gone through already. Staff reviewed Arizona's state statutes as they deal with mobile food vendors. We also received a model ordinance from the Arizona League of Cities and Towns and reviewed other Arizona jurisdictions regulations. We've used all those documents to help create various drafts for the proposed regulations. And the drafts were reviewed and refined by city staff, uh, different departments to create the proposed ordinance that you reviewed, uh, on August 8th. Uh, you, the council did provide some suggested changes, which are incorporated into the proposed ordinance before you today. Uh, the changes, uh, I'll go over them briefly. Uh, we added, uh, location of commissaries, uh, to be added to the business license requirements. So, uh, they have to tell us where their commissary is. Uh, we also increased the minimum size of the trash container from 15 to 30 gallons. We also revised and clarified when and where, uh, they can be located on a residential lot. Uh, we want to make sure it was on a developed private properties and for private use only. Uh, and then, uh, they're allowed to park on this, on the right of way in front of the property, um, if there's not ample room for them to park conveniently on the property itself. Uh, we also, uh, revised the maximum of, uh, one year for a major conditional use permit. Uh, so those will be only valid for one year, and then you have to come back if they want to reapply. And I also added standards for construction sites. Uh, so those mobile food vernit units serving a construction site are limited to one hour, uh, per day at the location, and they may be legally parked in the right of way. And then finally, uh, about the time limits, uh, when they could be parked in the right of way in a legal parking space, uh, we rearranged it a little bit, took it off of, struck it out of item number five and moved it up into units, uh, items one and two. Uh, they can be parked within a legal like parking space, um, from the hours of 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, they can take up one legal parking space. And then between, after that, from 8:00 PM to 4:00 AM, they can take up two legal parking spaces. Um, so those are the changes that the city council, um, suggested. And, uh, is still here, open any questions and comments you may have. Um, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Morris. So, yeah, we took up this, uh, this issue at our last council meeting with introduction. Today would be final adoption. meeting with introduction. Today would be final adoption, incorporating the public feedback that we received and council input. Right now, there are no regulations on the books for food vendors at all. And so we want to have some starting point of what the expectations are for both the operators as well as for property owners and the city. And I think we were able to come together with some really good options to start that. As we talked about last time, we talked about having a commitment to, to putting this ordinance in place and then revising it if necessary, once the operation happens, if it does become an issue. But are there any questions, members of the council? Councilman Lane?
Mr. Mayor, I know that I'm really adamant about this, but I see that they're, we're going to have them tell where their commissary is in order to get the license. I really, really want to see it posted on the license. I want it in the window on the thing where their commissary is. I understand that to get the license, they have to show it. As a customer, also as a business owner myself, I want to see that commissary posted on that license.
Yeah, I believe that was our feedback. So if we can make an adjustment to, to that, or Mr. Morris, if you, if that's already covered in here?
Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Morris, you want to grab?
Yeah, okay. I don't have laryngitis. Thank you. So it sounds like you want to add it under 5.24060, which is page two, display of license on page two of five?
I'm sorry, Luke. I thought we were doing that administratively. Jeff, okay.
We kind of discussed that at the last meeting, that we were going to, as we print out that business license, we'll print that information as part of that license. And that business license is what has to be posted in the, near the serving window. So we were going to do that as an administrative thing and not actually including the ordinance.
Okay, so we, you will see it when you come up to the window where their commissary is?
Yeah, we will work with business licensing and Kevin Moran and his group to make sure we get that printed out on that license.
Okay, so it doesn't need to be in the ordinance? It will just, that's just going to happen?
Yeah, so it'll be actually printed on the Lake Havasu City business license?
I, I've been hearing that. I just, because I don't see it in here and just saying, oh, that's the process we're going to do. I just want to make sure that's going to happen.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Can I just add to that, Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'll turn it back over. I've just been put under the impression that out-of-town temporary food permits from the county aren't required to have a local commissary. And so that may pose a, I, I'm just throwing this out there to you. If you see one that maybe doesn't have it, they're just not required to have a commissary here. You know, they supposedly have one wherever, back, wherever they live. But I don't know if that'll be on their Mojave County temporary permit.
So they would, they would be required to under this ordinance. So although the county doesn't require it, if they want to operate a food vending operation in Lake Havasu City, if this ordinance is adopted, they would be required to follow our code.
A local commissary?
Correct, yes. No, not local, I'm sorry, a commissary, yes, is what the current language is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is exactly the reason for that, because there's a lot that come out of town. And I want to know where they're putting their food. Are they storing it at their VRBO? Or are they storing it in the commissary? So that, that is kind of one of the reasons that I wanted to know where they're storing their food.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name's Steve. I'm a local mobile food eatery here in town.
Steve, if you could just let us know your last name, please.
Rangooses. With the new ordinance that you guys want to pass, it's going to make it very difficult for the vehicles that are over 24 feet. You're basically telling them that they can only work at night. Well, nobody really eats at night except for the weekends. So you're basically telling us that we can only work Friday and Saturday between eight in the morning and, I mean, eight at night till 4:30 in the morning, which makes no sense. Another concern you guys had was downtown. I don't think everyone here has done enough research with downtown. There is 103 parallel park, parking spots down there. There's 90 that are diagonal. Two of them are handicapped. It's a total of 295. Minus the handicap, there's 193 parking spots downtown. Most food trucks here in town use about eight of them. So, and they're all above Cuero. There is no ordinance right now. So we hold ourselves accountable. We try not to let other vehicles park in front of other businesses. Like I said, most of us park above the Cuero. I went downtown and I actually walked around and I asked a lot of businesses what their opinion was on the ordinance with the time, and they did not agree with it. Some of them did, and some of them were on the fence. They wanted more information. So I told them to come down here. If they showed up, I don't know. A lot of restaurants in town and businesses are closed Monday and Tuesday. So we're rarely not affecting those businesses. One of those businesses down there closes at 2 o'clock. The other restaurant is closed two and a half days out of the week. So I don't understand why us being cornered in that time slot when there's room for everyone to make money across the board. It doesn't only have to be that time slot. Now and in the future, our community, with the food trucks, we always monitor and hold everyone accountable. And we'll continue to do that because we don't want to lose our privileges of being in town or being parked anywhere that we want it to be. We respect other businesses. Like I said before, I come from a brick and mortar, okay? I want the same respect as another food truck would be when I decide to become a brick and mortar in the future. So that's it.
Thank you for, for your comments. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
How you doing, Mayor? Mayor, councilmen, women, Dave Armstrong, Stubby's Red Wagon Barbecue. Like I stated the last time I was here, I'm new to town. I've been here just under two months. When I first got to town, all of the food truck people reached out to me because obviously huge barbecue truck coming to town, small town, everybody knows. And they all told me the same thing, one after another, after another, basically that we police ourselves. There is no ordinances, there is nothing. And they told me that they never had any need for them because they're self-policed. If one of us steps out of line, the other ones jump down their neck until they get back in line. Whenever I'm out vending, I leave the spot where I'm at better, cleaner than when I, when I got there. I have a blower. I blow everything into the corner. I sweep it all up. I put it in a trash can. I have trash cans that I have supplied to everybody. Standing out in the hallway because there was too much room, I was overjoyed to hear that everybody in here was making reference to equality, everything being equal for everybody in the community, and how everybody was here for the people, meaning councilman, mayor, here for the people. The people want us here. The people are not overly concerned about where we're at. They want us here. The customers that, that go to the high-end restaurants, they're not my customers on that given day. But when they want something a lot less expensive but still quality, they come to me. They come to us. And we just want you guys to, to know that we're here. We want to comply with everything. We self-police ourselves. And is it really necessary for all of this when we're self-policing ourselves and there's no problems? There's no issues. Nobody's been complaining. As far as I'm under, if I'm wrong, then I'm wrong. But from what I'm hearing, I've walked up and down McCullough, I've walked down Akoma, I've walked and asked people similar to Steve, is there an issue? 90% of them said no. We want you here. You guys stimulate our business because if you serve 100 meals, that's 100 people times however many people they brought with them that are going to be right here in front of my store and my neighbor stores. And if we're helping stimulate the business for everybody, why regulate us down and tell like, you know, this direct, this directly affects me. My rig's 34 feet long, unhooked. I built that based on the rules and regulations that were put in play for months before I called Trevor at the city, called him. And I built my whole business, structured everything, moving my family and everything to be a resident here, to be a functioning member of society here and the community. And I'm trying to fit in, and I'm doing a great job. Everybody here loves it. Everybody here has responded well to what we've all got going on here. And I just, I would think that if there's a problem, then we would address it. If there isn't, why try and restrict the people that are just trying to come out and make money and support their families as well as the community and give back? Everything that I buy is local, in town. So I'm giving back to the community that gives back to me, that supports me. And I just, I, I don't see the need for it 100% based on the things that are going to affect 90% of the food trucks that are in town. The smaller ones, the shorter ones, they don't have the issues. As you can tell, they're not here because it doesn't affect them. The ones that it does affect, we're all here because we care about the community as well as our well-being and being able to support our families. That's all.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you.
Yeah, so most of the comments that we heard last time, just for the folks in the audience, if you weren't at our, our last council meeting, was that the food trucks are from 8:00 p.m. to 4:00 a.m. for two parking spots on McCullough. If there's a food truck that wants to, that's more than 24 feet long, which is what a parking stall is, they can work with a property owner, parking in common. There's multiple ways to be able to do this. This is just related to, as Steve had mentioned, eight parking spots along McCullough that are stopping there and selling stuff off of there. So they were trying to find a happy medium, but there still is many, many avenues for food trucks to be available within our community, up and down the street and other places, private properties, parking in common, lots of different ways. But this, this one area from 8:00 p.m. to 4:00 a.m. is specific to, to Main Street. And some of that conversation was to protect the brick and mortar restaurants that are down in those areas that might not be serving dinner past eight or nine o'clock at night. So it would give them an opportunity to fill in that void for some of the bar crowds that are down there. Anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Please, yeah, just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record.
Hi, guys. I am Jennifer McDonald. I own Jen's Concessions. I apologize, I did miss the first meeting for the initiation of the ordinance that you guys are imposing. And please correct me if I am wrong, but I have been doing this quite a while. Back when we used to have to log our hours, we were restricted to only a few days out of a month. We were only allowed to be in certain areas, you know, for the entire year to operate. And then House Bill 2371 got passed back in February of 2018, which allowed us open operation to be in public areas, obviously safely, as long as we were within a parking spot, in a public area, not blocking the sidewalks for the pedestrians to pass, not allowing them to, you know, be standing in the street. Obviously, we want to keep them safe. Not being able to operate within residential, which is, of course, we don't want to, you know, impose any infractions on a residential area. But from my understanding, it's being addressed as if there was never any regulations at all. But this being here, I've carried this bill in my truck since I began operating, to be very clear on understanding what I am allowed to do and to not do. So please correct me if I am wrong, that none of these have been updated, and it, and it's been across the state of Arizona, was signed by Governor Doug Ducey, and also is active in Maricopa County and across the state of Arizona. Of any event that we've ever gone to, also imposes the same regulations. So another thing that I am understanding is that you are trying to initiate another permit that we have to pay for to be able to operate on top of our already county license, our health license, our food handlers' cards, and all of those things. Why is there being initiated another permit when obviously we're already legitimately legal in all areas? All of our inspections are current, all of them are paid for just as well as brick and mortar restaurants have to do. Why are you imposing another permit that we have to pay for on top of it just to allow us to operate, which is already legally stated in this bill?
Yeah, I'll unpack a lot. There, there was a lot there. So there's, yes, the state law is, we have to comply with state law. So state law did change. And state law changed, this ordinance that is proposed in front of us has taken into account all the provisions of state law. We're not requiring you to get any additional permits. You already are required to get a business permit, a business license. That's, that's the only requirement you have from a licensing perspective from Lake Havasu City, in addition to the county health department permit, which you get from Mojave County. And so there's, there's nothing changed. This is the first time that Lake Havasu City has any, has formalized anything other than what state law was for food trucks. So that might be where the confusion is, is...
Well, what is the, the permit that you guys are saying that we have to get to operate?
So it's the business, like the commissary?
No, the commissary is all good. It's like for parking, yeah, the conditional...
Conditional use permit.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. So if you want to go on to private property or parking in common, you would have to get a conditional use permit, which is a zoning use action. So it's basically taking land that wasn't meant for food trucks, restaurants, or the like, and getting a conditional use permit from a zoning perspective to be able to use that, that, that parcel for a different use, in this case, a food truck.
Okay. And do you still have to get permission from the owner of that private property? And then the payment that is paid for that conditional use permit, does that property owner get that? Or does that go to the city?
So they, you do have to get the permission of the property owner, and the fee goes to the city to offset the cost of processing that permit. So we, we already have conditional use permits. We already have, we have those permits already in place, but it takes the staff time that goes through to, to address all of those areas.
That, that's completely understandable. Does the property owner see any bit of that payment at all, considering that it is their property that we are also being parked on, like to share with the city?
Yeah, the conditional use permits is literally the cost to recover service of, of staff time to process that. So no, there's no fee. Do, do any of you happen to know the fee offhand?
I believe the conditional use permit is somewhere around $300 or $400, depending upon major or minor.
Okay, yes. Guys, you can't, we're, we're having a public meeting. You'll have, you have the opportunity to come to the podium if you want to share your thoughts. But sorry, Mr. Morris.
I believe it's somewhere between $300 to $700 or something, depending upon whether it's a major or a minor.
Okay.
And is that annual?
The different, Mr. Morris, if you want to explain that?
Well, if this code gets passed as, as proposed, if it's a major conditional use permit, then it's valid for up to a maximum of one year.
And then a minor is, it would be perpetual. So if you had a property that currently is a bar, restaurant, there's a few other categories, that would be a minor amendment, and it's just one and done. So if you have a relationship with a local bar or restaurant that wants to have an off-site food truck as well as part of their operation, they would just file the permit and, and that would be a one, a one-time, and you would not have to apply again.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Reagan Ross, representing downtown and the cause on McCullough Boulevard. Thank you for all the edits that were done after the last meeting. I think the one that's just still mostly under discussion at this point is section G.2 about the hours on McCullough. It's any public space, but really, we're talking about McCullough. So as a solution to this, to, to get past this hump, I would propose that they are not allowed to park on any public space between 6:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. instead of 8:00 p.m. I think cutting it off or at 8:00 p.m., you are, as Steve said, completely eliminating the dinner hour for them. One that's operated a drive-through fast casual restaurant for 12 years, five to six is a legitimate dinner service hour. So they get off work, they work downtown, they want to get their food, take it home, they don't want to go back out. So if they came, were able to park at 4:00 p.m., prep all of their menu items, open the window at 5:00, you would be able to, I think, find a happy medium. I would also suggest that it, they're allowed to park in two spots on the weekends. We all know McCullough is pretty desolate area on a Sunday, so I don't know why we would prevent business from happening downtown. We're putting millions of dollars into a downtown catalyst project, and you're not going to allow food trucks to park there except at 8:00 p.m. until 4:00 a.m. It's not, hopefully, a lot of people in this new downtown catalyst project at those hours. So I would just encourage for those hours to be, and it's, it's really easy to explain to people as well that they have that 12-hour window. You're, you're able to park in a public space from 4:00 p.m. to 4:00 a.m. 12 hours, you got it? Pack everything up. Pack everything up, go home. There are about twelve restaurants on McCulloch, right on McCulloch, between Akoma and Smoke Tree. None of them are here this evening to oppose food trucks being in that corridor. So I really, as Steve said, I don't feel that there's a problem. We do have the map that was created for all of the parking spots along and literally half are diagonal. We've eliminated all of those spots. So if you think about that whole Akoma to Smoke Tree and thinking food trucks parked up and down, it's not really a realistic visual because the parking naturally is going to eliminate that. And I did want to point out in downtown that there are four food trucks that are operating permanently under the conditional use permit. So that is active, those are working well, don't have any problems with those. I think it's more just the public spots on McCulloch. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
Hi, guys. Renee Shaline. I just wanted to go over, I noticed the one hour for the construction site, so I was talked to about somebody because they don't, a lot of them don't like to leave, to have to drive into town depending on where they're at. I go to outside by Walmart. The one hour, so again, with the prep and the knockdown and taking everything back with me, I don't understand how that would work if I'm limited to the one hour. So I get up early, I have to get set up, get wherever I'm going set up, take my stuff out there. Not everybody is taking lunch at the same time. Some of them are in between finishing a task. So that would take away, alleviate that. I wouldn't be able to do that or any of the other trucks per se if we were asked to go to desolate places where people are just stuck, they need to do what they're doing. They don't want to stop to run into town because they're on limited time. As far as the license, having it, when I applied for my business license, I was informed at the office, you can put the commissary's address on there because obviously everybody that comes and visits, they see that license, so you don't want your personal address, your personal information there. Mine states the address for the commissary on it and it is visible, so you can see it. But that's what they initially had recommended I do so that I don't have to worry about somebody coming to my house or getting my personal information. So that's already available on that end. That's how I have it set up. And we all get a lot of our mail at the commissary. So most of that is, our business address is commissary and then just our personal stuff. As far as the licensing as well, I mean, I'm looking at, I pay about six hundred dollars for my my license for the year, about a hundred and forty for my health permit. To run the business, I have to have a special food handler's certification. It costs about eighty dollars, a hundred dollars, depending on where you get it. On top of all the employees, if we have employees, that we are required, you know, to make sure that they have all that stuff. And then now you want to throw in another permit, three to seven hundred dollars more on top of the fact that, I mean, we're small businesses, we're not huge corporations. So again, we shop local, we don't have Costco's and big corporation stores that we're allowed to shop out. We're here and we shop here. So now I'm limited on how much stuff I have, how much space we all are allotted, you know, our trucks aren't massive. So we're shopping more frequently than per se the restaurants and storefronts because we have limited space. So you're just like adding, that's more trips that we're having to take. We can't get people to deliver to us because we don't need enough supply because we can't, we don't have anywhere to store all that supply. So we have to shop short, small. So just adding the extra licensing is kind of, it hurts us.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember.
This is a prime example. A commissary cannot be in your house. It has to be at a public commissary. So putting an address on there should not be a problem because nobody is willing to come to your house because you cannot have a commissary at your house. You cannot. It has to be at a place, for example, at the cause. It cannot be at your house. So there should be not a problem with putting your address or name where it is because it's a public restaurant or building that allows it.
That's, it's on my license, that's what I'm seeing.
Yeah, she's letting us know that the commissary is already on.
The commissary address, when I went to get the permit, it asked, they stated, put the address that you want this information about. It's my business, so I have mail for my business that goes to the commissary. It has the commissary's address on my business license.
So I don't understand having put the name of the commissary on your license, what the problem would be.
But why do I need, if the address is there, because that's not my personal address, I don't understand why we're having an issue as, I get the out-of-towners, okay, because that was a big issue. They don't, they're not required to use commissaries. So where are they dumping and doing all their stuff? But we're here and how many commissaries do we have here? Okay, so.
Good question. That's a really good question because with as many vending vendors that I see here, I'm having a very hard time. And I'm not the health department. I'm having a hard time believing that every single one of these food vendors and the ones that aren't here are in one location. That's why I want to see where the commissary is. And, like, I don't want to disagree with you, but food handlers' cards are ten dollars.
So. But not for a manager's certificate.
Card, plus you need others. But commissaries, as I mentioned last time, can be dry, or car wash. It's about getting rid of your gray water and your black water, so.
And where you're storing and preparing your food, if you're not doing it inside of the truck.
Doing it inside the truck, correct, yes.
I have a question on that commissary also. If, can I ask Reagan a question?
Sure, Ms. Ross, if you're, well, Ms. Ross is coming up. Let me just talk a little bit about the construction one-hour limit. That was just to protect the original food truck that existed, the one that made their food and then they would drive to a construction site and sell all their hamburgers or whatever it would be that were wrapped. That's just to protect those people. If you're going to go to a site, a remote location or something that would be private property, you would have the private property owner's permission and you can be there. That's not a problem. You don't need a conditional use permit, you don't need any of those types of things. The conditional use permit is only using a property that is not meant for those types of uses. But if you go to like a private event, like a wedding, you know, somebody maybe is having a family reunion or a wedding in a backyard, that's different and that's spelled out in this code. So those are the differences between that. Ms. Councilmember Lynn?
Sure. So all of these vendors that use you as a commissary, are they allowed to come in twenty-four hours into the place of business?
Yes, they have twenty-four-seven access.
And they have access to the building and into, do you have an indoor refrigeration or is it outdoor?
It's indoor.
So everyone is allowed to come in, that's where they can prep and eat twenty-four hours?
Yes.
Okay, so at nighttime when some of them are closing up at four, that's where they'll come in and they'll store their food there?
Yep, every member has an individual alarm code, so they know how to get into the building.
And how many currently do you have?
We have, Steve has my sheet, we have about, for food trucks, I mean, total members, we have a variety of members. Food trucks, we have probably about fifteen. About seventy-five percent of the food trucks are members of the cause. The other ones use local restaurants.
Do you have anybody from out of town when they come in? Do you have anybody currently that uses you as a commissary?
No, they're all local because they have their, a part of my requirements to be a member is they have to have an annual business license and annual health permit. That I've only in four years of doing this had one out-of-towner. It was actually West Coast Burrito before she was a member of the community. They were doing a large event, so they needed our facility, but none of the others have reached out.
So you see where my concerns are. You're doing it the right way. I have concerns with the ones that are not. When you're doing it the right way, you have your vendors coming in, they're licensed, you check all that, you know, where the food's being stored. That makes me feel safe for my community who's eating that food. So, you know, we've talked about the health department wanting, not wanting to be, have the conversations to put an ordinance themselves. So whatever we can do as a council, I want to protect our citizens. So that's really, the commissary thing is really important to me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember.
I agree with Councilmember Lynn on this. Unfortunately, and this is my concern, is anything health, food, the county health handles that. And so unfortunately, there's nothing we can put in there to really regulate that, which is very frustrating. Because, for example, I don't agree with that we can police ourselves because, yes, you guys are in here, you're part of the community. You know, you're working together, I appreciate that. But when you get an out-of-towner that comes in and sets up, if I get a complaint, the health department's going to respond, they're going to see, come see me in, within the week, they know where I am. If you're one of the vendors on McCulloch that just set up and was there for the weekend, you've already moved on to the next city. So of course we have to put stuff in place that protects the whole city as well because we're going to have, we're going to have some not-so-good players in this equation as well. So as far as like policing yourself, I do have a concern with that. I hope the county is hearing this as well with our concerns because, you know, they're having a financial crisis as well and talking about, you know, cutting eighteen percent of their budgets, departments across the board. So, and in my opinion, while I have a lot of respect for the people at the health department, like Cameron says, I don't want someone showing up tomorrow. But they do have a hard time keeping people and bringing people in that know what they're supposed to do. And so, you know, for having, if there is a complaint, to have them respond is a concern. But it's the same concern as a brick and mortar restaurant as well. So that's, I think, the one thing we do have to keep in mind is we can't, we have to stay in our lane. And while it's very frustrating, we have to stay in our lane. And as far as the health food side is a county issue, so if anybody has concerns about that, I hope they would take that up with the county, so.
Thank you.
Mayor, Jim, you're in trouble. I got my health inspection last week, right after I said that. Good luck tomorrow, bud.
Benny Bennett, the Pizza King, have a trailer here in town. Last time we were at this meeting, I took a guy aside and I said, I have a really good situation for you to alleviate people that are worried about where they're at. And the health department issues you a sticker that goes on the exterior of your trailer. So that thing has a date and it's a seal. And so the city should look into, when you give us the business license and everything, we get a sticker that with a police officer or a citizen or anybody will know that we're not an out-of-towner, we're in compliance, we're doing exactly what you guys want us to do. And so in my opinion, I think you need to look into something as simple as that. Because a lot of us don't have window displays where we can put our license that can be seen by the window. We have so much equipment in my, in my trailer. But it is accessible and can be easily handed to somebody. But I think that's a quick and easy way.
Yeah, thank, Mr. Bennett, did you say that Mojave County requires that sticker or other places that you've been requires it? Mojave County?
When I began my journey getting into this, rather than brick and mortar, I picked this venue to introduce myself to this community. And in doing that, of course, I went through all the steps to do it because I'm an eighteen-year veteran of brick and mortar. This isn't my first barbecue. So it's just something that I saw and I thought to myself, it would really help out in the simple fact that people on both sides of it, you know, if you have police officers that are going to be having to to look at that sort of stuff, then make it so it's really easy to see quickly and it's a done deal.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? All right, seeing, now we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion. Vice Mayor Lynn?
Thank you. I just want to make a few comments because I'm really actually kind of surprised about all the conversation we have because we just did this two weeks ago. And we talked then, food trucks are here to stay. People like food trucks, food trucks are all over the country. And, but we have to compromise. We have to come to a compromise between the food truck industry and our brick and mortar restaurants that are here that have been supporting our community forever, not just for the last year, for the last few months. So we came up with a compromise. We talked about this parking. One of the gentlemen said that we're limiting them only to the nighttime. No, it's not that we're only limiting you to the nighttime. You can park your truck in any legal spot and set up business. It's downtown, those few spots, if you want to take up more than one space, I believe it was Councilmember Campbell and Councilmember Moses that brought this up. By making it after eight o'clock, you can take up more than one space, then the businesses that are along McCulloch there are closed. That was a compromise. I think that was a great compromise. But we're not saying you can't park on McCulloch if you only take up one space, but there's other places all around town. It's just McCulloch Boulevard that you have that issue. So you can park on Swanson or Mesquite or any of the other places that's legal to park. So we're not limiting you to, you can only operate from eight o'clock at night to four in the morning. You can just only take up more than one parking space on McCulloch Boulevard between eight o'clock at night. Except for between eight o'clock at night and four o'clock in the morning. That was the compromise and I think it's a great compromise. We talked about the, having the name of the commissary on the business license. That is not a bad thing, whether the address is there or not, but having the name of that commissary is good for our public. So as the gentleman said, a sticker is a good thing, so you know. But having the name of the commissary, if you see somebody that is not policing themselves, the majority of you are, but you all know that there are people that come into town that don't police themselves and a citizen sees somebody putting trash or grease or whatever in the gutter on the street, they can look at that business license on the truck and see who's responsible. That's important for our public. So I don't see that as an issue. And then as far as a conditional use permit, I heard a lot of chuckles when we talked about the cost. Yeah, it costs a lot to have that conditional use permit. It goes through the fire department, the police department and everybody else. It's not just one person looking at it and stamping it. It goes through the whole city to ensure the location that they're putting this truck for this conditional use permit is safe for the citizens. And it's the cost of doing business. Our brick and mortar restaurants have a cost of doing business, maintaining that building and paying the insurance on that building. They choose that. The people that have the food truck have a cost of doing business. They choose that. So I don't see a problem with it if they want to park on, on that property in the parking lot of a business that is parking in common. They get the permission from the property owner and they get a conditional use permit. There's a way to do it and you're not parked on McCulloch and you can take up fifty feet if you need to. That's just the cost of doing business. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Lynn. And just to add on to your point there, as if it wasn't paid for by the property owner or the person getting a conditional use permit, taxpayers would be paying for it. So of course it makes sense having the person that is driving that work to pay or recoup that cost. Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor, yes. Thanks, Mayor Lynn. You and I totally agree today. I'm going to be a strong advocate for the brick and mortar restaurants, but even more than that, it's the beauty salons, it's the spas, the real estate agents. And to say that after, at four or five o'clock, there's hardly anybody there. Have you ever been to Taco Tuesday? You're going to be walking a few blocks. You're going to be walking a long way. I've had other people come up to me and say, what happens when it's Thursday night cruise nights when it cools down? Is every parking spot going to be taken by a food truck and all of our cruised cars that we like to have out there? And we've been doing that for like fifty years, guys, you know? So again, it's compromise. I think we started with a really good compromise. It was going to just be six hours and we expanded upon that. So at this point, we cannot make everybody happy. Everybody on this council knows that. We even disagree up here. So at the end of the day, this, what we have here is a good start and hopefully we all kind of agree.
Any additional, Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, thank you. Luke, I had a question before I made some comments, but with the conditional use permit or, you know, major use permit, it's only bars, nightclubs and why are we only allowing them the opportunity?
Well, the, the minor conditional use permit may be used if their host property is a restaurant, nightclub, bar or resort. And that would require a major conditional use permit in all other situations. So it would be a minor condition use permit if the host is one of those types of businesses. Because we feel the food truck is more complimentary to that sort of use or similar to it. And then a major condition use permit for all other types of host businesses.
So, and for all other host businesses?
Right.
Okay. Just, I mean, I bring up that question because my, I'm always scared of unintended consequences. of unintended consequences. And so, we are, in a sense, because there's only so many people on McCulloch that can get that conditional use permit, we're in a sense making that very valuable, where they could almost turn that into a profit, profit generator, right? And so, that's not necessarily okay, because the other businesses have just as much right to their, to the parking in common as the restaurants and bars. And so, I, that's one of my worries, that we're, we're now just going to kind of give them a gift, more so than any other business down there. So, I, I've been tossing around the idea of opening that up to every single business, since they all have a right to that public.
And if I may elaborate a little more, I didn't fully describe that when the major condition use permit is required, it'd be if they're going to be there for three, they'd be there a maximum of three days in seven consecutive, consecutive day period, they don't need a conditional use permit. That would be
A major.
Just allowed. If they're going to be there more than that, then that's when they need the conditional use permit, a major or minor dependent upon the host property. So, I, forgive me for not elaborating a little more clearly the first time.
So, if the mobile and mobile food vending is, is being mobile, they don't have to do it. So, if they're moving around and they're going from one spot to the other spot, then they, they don't. But if you're going to set up shop and be a, a restaurant out of a mobile food vending truck or trailer in front of a business, permanently, you have to go through the
In their parking in common.
In their parking in common or in, in really any area. Yeah, on the property, correct? Yeah, so.
All right, thank you for that. I mean, this is a very complex thing and we're, we're really working through this. And so, I appreciate that information. So, to me, this is a, there's a lot of businesses up here that, you know, food truck owners that come up here and they want equality. They want it to cost what everybody else costs. And I agree with that. But what they're not understanding is those, those shops on McCulloch, those, those businesses, restaurants, I mean, to me, it's not even a restaurant thing. It's a shop thing. Like, it's, it's a business thing. They pay a lot of money to be on McCulloch. They could go somewhere else and pay a lot less, but they pay there for that prime location and they're paying a lot of money to do it. You're essentially using a public asset to do it for free. And so, that's not really, that's not really right. And so, I want you guys to understand, just by even having this conversation, is already a compromise. It's already there. And so, I want you guys to know that this whole council has advocated on behalf of not only you, but every single business owner in this town. The only other comment I would make, you know, I originally said the 4:00 to 4:00 thing the last time. I'm going to come back and see if there's any, any wiggle room on that, because we changed it from 8:00 PM to 4:00. To me, this is a parking issue. I just need to protect the parking for the businesses that are already there. After 5:00, those business, a lot of those businesses open up. And so, if we could move that from 8, the start from 8, move it to 5:00, and then that way, it, it's, in my mind, maybe a little more reasonable for these, for these trucks. But I agree, we've, we've already given them a path in, in, in parking in common areas and stuff like that. We've also given them a path if they already just fit in one spot, just like the, just like the Arizona state law says. So, I wanted to gauge everybody's interest and see if you're willing to move it to 5:00.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Moses. So, is there consensus of moving it from 8:00 PM to a time earlier? Looks like I have three nods.
I can say it out loud if you
Yes.
I would say no, I don't want to change it, because they can still park there. It's if they want to take more than one parking space. So, if they just are going to use one parking space, they can park there at 5:00. If they want to take more than one parking space, they need to wait till 8:00 at night when all the businesses are closed.
In my opinion. Thank you. Councillor Dolan?
This is a tough one. I think Cameron hit the, hit the nail on the head with, you know, like I said, to be on McCulloch, you're paying a lot to be there. And a lot of these businesses maybe only have one parking spot in front of them. And if somebody shows up at, you know, first thing in the morning and takes that spot, because it's a good spot and they're, a trailer there, they can be there all day. The question was, should it be 5:00 or 8:00? We're talking about the two trail, the, the two spaces. Part of me would almost like to see, I think the biggest issue, we've compromised on a lot of this stuff, a lot of, and nobody has issues with a lot of that stuff. A lot of this comes down to what happens on McCulloch. And McCulloch is, and, you know, no matter what we do within the next, if all of a sudden we realize McCulloch's lined up with all these trucks and nobody has parking, this is going to have to come back before council and we'll have to make changes with that, because we do have to regulate the parking issue on McCulloch. The one thing I like is if we, you know, one spot or two spot, if we limited it to 5:00 or they showed up, then if you have a business owner that's there and there till 5:00 or 6:00, they could leave a car in front of it, they could protect their business. I don't know. I, I kind of have an issue with, I love, I love the idea of mobile food trucks, but when you're talking about somebody that has to pull in with a trailer setup, do all that stuff, it is a lot for that area. So, I, to be honest, I, I don't know if it's 5:00 or 8:00. I kind of have an issue with, because like I said, a lot of this comes down, it's not about food trucks in the city, it's about food trucks on McCulloch. Yeah, so that's, I, I don't know. I, I would almost like to see us have more control of parking on McCulloch. And if your business plan revolves around your survival being on, being on McCulloch all the time, then maybe you need another business plan. Maybe you need to be out in the community, doing other areas, other spots. But if it's going to all come down to spots on McCulloch, I kind of have a concern with that. I do have a question for whoever can answer it from the city. I know we talked about if there's health issues, anything with that, it has to go to the health department. Some of the concerns I've heard is with some of the trucks, you know, you have $1,000 in sales and you don't give receipts, so you can say you did 200 in sales. I know we also have brick-and-mortars that also do the same thing, which reminds me, if you get a receipt, check to make sure they're charging tax. But what is the avenue if somebody has concerns that a business, a brick-and-mortar or a cart is not charging tax? Who can, who can they address that to, to make sure that's rectified?
Mayor, Councilmember Dolan, first and foremost, Arizona Department of Revenue. And that they take any complaints that take place very, very seriously. If you reach out to the city, we can take that complaint as well too, and we have many times. We do perform desk audits on businesses. The council has declined different business licenses or different applications for liquor licenses to the state, because businesses are not paying their fair share or any sales tax whatsoever. So, whether it's brick-and-mortar, food truck, whatever business we're in, we see that in the community. If you have, and if you see that, please report it to the Department of Revenue or please report it to Lake Havasu City.
Okay, thank you. And as for consensus, I, I don't know. I'd have to see when we vote. I'm, I'm still curious to hear what other people think and get their perspective. So, but I, like I said, McCulloch is my, is my big concern and, yeah.
Yeah, really, the timeframe is literally just McCulloch. I mean, that's
Yes, it's literally McCulloch.
We, right now, as far as the 8:00, it doesn't look like we have an appetite to move it from that time. Councilmember Koch, sorry to put you on the spot, but you're
Yeah, no, I don't, I'm, I'm probably the only one that doesn't have a super big dog in the fight here. My experience with the McCulloch Boulevard and the businesses, just from my many years of running a big event on McCulloch, was that the business owners always complained about us shutting the street down for events or having people in front of their businesses. However, with that being said, we're not hearing a big outpour of people here complaining. I don't know, you know, maybe they have a sounding voice that's already been here and, or talked to people. Other than that, I know two people that have reached out to me outside of the, the meetings. But I, I mean, I can go along with the consensus of what the council thinks is best. I, I don't know that a couple hours here or there makes a huge difference from what we've heard from the vendors, that they need an hour or longer to prep. So, to say we're going to move it to 5:00, if they're going to hit the dinner rush from 5:00 to 6:00, 7:00 o'clock, if they're not able to get in till 5:00, they won't be ready till 6:00. I don't know it's going to make a big difference for them. So, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm kind of up in the air on it, because I, I don't do that for a living. I'm not in that business. And all I really know is, is the other end of it, which is just events on McCulloch, which we always got complaints on. But I, I don't know that a 5:00 is going to help them based on what they've told us.
All right, so how we'll handle that is in the motion that hopefully is going to be coming very quickly. One last thing that I want to just lay on the table, another comment that we have not unpacked yet from the speakers were allowing the food trucks to be there on the weekends, outside of those hours. Is there an appetite to discuss that? Anyone interested in allowing food trucks all day on the weekends? Okay, so at this point, I think we can entertain a motion.
I had one person come to me and said, "I don't care if they want to park food trucks all around that park up there. That might be a good place, because eventually there might be picnic benches and all that." So, that, that was the only thing that they said that owns a business there. And they just don't want them taking up all their parking spots. And probably, I'm the only one, and I don't have a dog in the game anymore, but I was there for 24 years. And as a business owner and owning all that property, you don't know how many times I had to walk a long way to get just to work. So, to pretend that, that, that's not an issue down there is not true. And as soon as I went to parking in common, they even made my life worse. So, I own all that property behind my building. I paid for all the parking spots, I insured it, I had to repair it, I had to fix it all. And to just, when it went to parking in common, everybody parks there. You can go four stories up now. So, I, I am worried about the future of parking on McCulloch. I'm worried about all of that. But as a compromise, maybe on a Sunday, if you just get, be the first ones to park around the park, maybe. But I think we have a good ordinance in front of it. I'd like to motion to, if you don't mind.
I would like a motion.
Okay. All right, let's go back to, oh, it's over here. We got to get rid of that. Hang tight. Again. Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance number 23-1316, declaring the document entitled 2023 Amendments to Lake Havasu City Code Title V, to add a new chapter 5.24 Mobile Food Vendors, August 22, 2023, a public record in adopting by reference mobile food vendor regulations.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell, second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. All right, item 7.3 is approved, final subdivision plat for track 2391 Trinity at Havasu Foothills Estates, a subdivision of 24 residential lots and the residential estates planned development. Mr. Tunneman?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce our new planning division manager, Chris Gilbert, who will be officially taking over for Luke Morris, starting first thing in October. Chris comes to us from the city of Raytown, Missouri, and has 15-plus years' experience in municipal planning. We're excited to have him on board and look forward to seeing him succeed in his role here with the city. So, with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Chris.
Excellent. Welcome, Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Let me advance this one slide here. Okay, this particular case revolves around the approval of a final plat for Trinity Havasu Foothills Estates, track 2391. Let me give you some quick background. The ordinance number 03717 on October 21, 2003, approved the 697 total units that the developer's entitled to. And this plat is part of that remaining 90 units of that 697 that have not yet been constructed. This has nothing to do with any new, future development that they may do. This is part of the original entitled approval. So, to advance with this, what the final plat is, is it's the last step of the subdivision process and primary purpose is to delineate property boundaries, describe dedicated right-of-ways and easements. Once approved and signed, it becomes a legal document that is recorded with the county assessor and then allows subdivided lots to be sold. And that's only after the plat meets all the city subdivision ordinance, zoning ordinance requirements. The financial guarantees have been posted and accepted for the installation of public improvements. And I do want to also add, the next item following this is related to this as well, but I'll get to that separately. So, let me go through the slides. This is the, the big kind of yellowish square that you see there with the, covering most of the screen, that is Havasu Foothills Estates. The red outline is the approximately 69 units, plus or minus one, that depends on one particular lot. Not sure about viability of, but there's 69 units there. And that was approved by the planning commission previously as a preliminary plat. The very south end of that is 24 lots within track 2391. That location is what's being considered tonight. So, let me advance this one slide. This is the preliminary plat approved by the planning commission on February 15, 2023. Through the middle of the drawing there, kind of, let me go back one, kind of looks like that area. And I'll use the mouse pointer here to kind of do the outline. The very south part of that is track 2391, and that is, again, what we're considering tonight. Everything to the west is not platted, not part of this. This is a zoom into the final plat area from the preliminary plat. The 24 lots are approximately right here. And as you can see, they're going to build the access across the wash and then all the internal improvements, well, initially here. And then later, here's the phasing. Later, you'll see track 2411, which is here, track 2412 come forward, but the rest of those preliminary platted lots and, and that will total to 69 that they're already considering. But again, tonight, it's just the southernmost piece right here, coming off Cherry Tree Boulevard. Yeah, I think that's, no, here's the final plat. So, this is a more detailed view of the 24 lots. And again, this plat meets all the city's requirements. They posted the financial guarantees and staff recommends approval of, of this plat. Mr., Mr. Mayor, that completes my review. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gilbert. So, generally, these items are on our consent agenda. But there's a companion item, as Mr. Gilbert alluded to, for an agreement based on some topography that they chose for the lift station. We'll get into that more specifically. But we wanted it to be very clear what, what the elements were. And that's why this is on our regular agenda this evening. Again, these are the items of the original 697 lots that were, were approved by the city council all the way back in 2003 as part of that. So, there's unrelated issues for future development that might explain why some of you are here today. But just keep in mind, this is a final plat for those, those units that Mr. Gilbert just reviewed. Are there any questions from members of the council on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
My eyes are not that good. The, what, can you tell me what the street is that connects Cherry Tree Boulevard to this development?
It's hard to see, but it's Pueblo Vista Drive.
Okay.
That would be the new road that they're creating.
They're, okay, that's what I was, that road is not there yet. They're going to create that road. And you said something about a wash. So it goes over wash?
It kind of shows right here. Let's see, let me go back. What's the best slide? That one, I guess, the best slide. You can see Cherry Tree Boulevard on the south end, and north of that is the wash.
Mr. Gilbert, if you could just follow the mouse, just so those in the audience can see, thank you.
I used the mouse here. My apologies. This is the wash, and the roadway is going to cross over that and access that final plat.
Okay, so the developer is totally responsible for that whole road. City's not doing anything. It's not going to affect our wash, nothing like that. Okay.
As part of this, as part of this final plat, part of the infrastructure permit is to build a box over that wash as part of the improvements.
Are there any additional questions for members of the staff? Does the applicant want to speak or just available for questions? Available for questions? Okay, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. On this particular item, we did have several folks sign up. And so we will go in the order in which they signed up, and then we'll open it up to anyone else that would like to address the council. So we go in the order in which they were received. We'll start with Terry Maple. You don't want to speak at this point?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next is Christine Murray. Yes, please.
Christine Murray, I live on Colt Drive in the Equestrian community up by Kiowa and Bison. And my concern about this final plat is some of the attachments the city included in the agenda item mirror or are consistent with some of the discussion that occurred at a recent community meeting about access roads from the Foothill Estates into our neighborhood. So that raised heightened concerns when one of the attachments was specifically directing attention to an access road that would be part of the next phase that showed coming out of the north end. And so it raised, that would be perfect right there where it says connection through state land. This is the map we saw at the community meeting, with the exception that the roadway planned is not depicted at that lower-left corner, which is also troubling. With all of this construction in the foothills, it's raised concern about strategic planning in regards to infrastructure in place and the impact it has on the community below the developments. And the absence of a clear traffic mitigation plan is troubling. You're adding, right now, 29 or 24 new homes to the equation with an additional 69 or 70 homes at a later date. I don't know if any of you could get an invitation to have coffee with someone that lives on Cherry Tree Lane, but I think those residents would like the transparency and the community input that we hope to insist upon when these plans are going to dump these problems in existing neighborhoods. You're creating wonderful new neighborhoods that we would like to see, but you're not addressing the impact on the people below. And there's nothing in these existing plans that mitigate the 24 new homes and all of the residents driving there. You have a water circumstance, from what I understand from my friends in the foothill communities, that does not have completion. You're missing piping, you're missing roadways. And any proposed access roads appear to be tied to the builders developing access to this infrastructure when the city, according to the residents in the estates, where the city apparently made the commitment to create access to that infrastructure. And because of that, you're forcing the builders to plan a roadway to the north to dump all of the new traffic you're encouraging occur there into existing residents below, including equestrian areas that will negatively impact our daily use in our communities. And we feel very concerned about the absence of what appears to be any long-term vision about what trickles down that hill. I appreciate the concerns that the council member mentioned about our wash. But let's understand that the runoff on the wash is extremely important, but so is the runoff from traffic and congestion it creates. Where is the city's long-term plan to mitigate this? My recent contact with members of this council indicated an absence of any consensus about how we mitigate this traffic. So why are we pushing forward without those infrastructure, critical infrastructure plans in place? The absence of foresight and long-term vision concerns me as a longtime resident and visitor here, and I would hope it would concern you as well.
So again, this property was developed, what we're talking about tonight is what was already approved by the city council. This, I absolutely can see where it's alarming to you, where it talks about connection through for future phases. Those are not approved, those future phases, at all. This is just where the lines go for the county recorder's office. This is what we're talking about tonight.
Well, my question then, and I would ask it of everyone here, I don't expect a direct answer, but do you know what the impact will be to the citizens below this development with 24 homes added? Do you know what the impact will be when 69 homes are added? Or 121? Or if you build a northern road, all of the hundreds of homes that will adjoin that new road? And if you don't know the answer, why are you going to vote yes tonight?
Yeah, so the 69 homes. Yeah, the 69 homes is already what was approved through the final. Ms. Murray, your time is up. And if you would like to speak, you're more than welcome to come at your turn.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Can I, I have a question for the applicant, if that's okay? In regards to her concern?
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. Dustin Runyon with Apex West.
Have you done any traffic studies?
We have, yes, we did a, we did a traffic study. And my engineer and partner, Britt, he can elaborate on the traffic study that was done by Greenlight.
I just wanted to find out, yeah, because these are, these are big questions. They're big questions for me, too, because I don't even know why we're going towards Bison. I'm confused. To me, it doesn't seem logical. But so you've done a traffic study. What do you know?
Yeah, before you start, so we're not talking about going to Bison at all. That's not what's happening tonight. This is the final plan of plat of 697 units. That's not what's happening. The traffic study that you're talking about is going to be on Cherry Tree?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. If you could please answer Councilmember Campbell's question.
The final plat, I just wanted to kind of answer some questions out here. They've been saying, has the developer done a traffic study? I wanted to know, has the developer done a traffic study? You said yes.
Yes, yes, I think we're on our third traffic study now. There was one originally, maybe Greg, you can shed some light on that, on what year that was performed, which approved the 697 units. We're working on additional traffic studies that, you know, to find out what's going to happen with the additional proposed units. We're performing our second traffic study right now, and we expect that to be available in the next week or so, which would shed light on what everybody's concerned with, the future traffic.
And this is just up and down Cherry Tree, is what you're saying?
Correct.
And what, what kind of response did they get? Are they, are we obviously probably ready for second access or not?
The initial study, we're continuing to make adjustments based on the changes, then the discussions that we're having. The initial traffic study that we have, which will, we'll have some new data in the coming weeks here. The original one found a 49% reduction in traffic. A lot of that was based on, there was land held for shopping centers, and there was a lot of other commercial uses, which is a really intense traffic use. When this is converted over to residential use, your traffic volumes go way down, which is the reason that you would see that.
Okay, well, again, we, like we talked about before, these are the studies that Councilmember Moses was talking about, that we need information, and the developer is being asked to do these traffic studies. And hopefully, they're going in front of the staff, and these conversations are happening. So again, this is just for the final plat. You are doing traffic studies. We'll all be more educated as we move forward, right?
Correct. And just to reiterate a bit, in the original plan development of 697 units that was approved, there was a retail component and commercial component within the foothills. And there was a traffic study done that gave the specific traffic that would be going up and down Cherry Tree. Now that the retail and the commercial had been removed, we had done an additional traffic study through Greenlight, which is available to anyone who would like to read it. And we can send to council as well. Because of the elimination of retail and commercial that was originally supposed to be approved for the foothills, it cut the traffic in half. So half the traffic that was supposedly approved in the original plan development to go up and down Cherry Tree, which was, which was half. Now, we're doing another traffic study as well, based on some different key components, but that will be available to anybody, anybody who asks, so.
Yeah, because my feelings and my logic would be that we should have put a second access in 10 years ago. But those are my feelings and my emotions, which we can't really deal with all the time. So we're just on the final plat today. Thank you for answering some questions for me.
Absolutely, and always available.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Belinda Brewer.
Hi, my name's Belinda Brewer. I also live in the Colt-Bison area. She kind of stole my thunder, so I'm going to make more of this a Q and A, if that's okay.
Sure.
And it specifically relates to the phasing plan, which is attached to your agenda item. The connection through Arizona State land required for future phases, connection to what?
Yeah, so the phasing that is in front of us today is the blue area up on the screen. So the one that has the dotted red line is what we're talking about today. And then if, I guess that's north, or would that be east? Going up to track 2411 and then up to 2412, that is the plating for the 69 units that remain and what was approved. That's what we're talking about today.
I understand, Mr. Mayor. But your attachment in your legislative text references a bubble here about future development.
Yes.
Okay, that should not be part of this council agenda's item tonight. That shouldn't have been included. Because to me, it's almost as if you are giving conditional approval for future development and the access route. And that's troubling. Secondly, my next question. Why is the city relying on the developer-funded and managed studies, traffic studies? And where's the city's master plan for traffic as it relates to the outgrowth of our city?
Sure, yeah, Greenlight's a well-respected firm that the city also uses. We also have a metropolitan planning organization that does traffic studies throughout the entire region for regional planning from a traffic perspective. So once we get something from the developer on their traffic study, from their engineers, our team reviews it. So we have a team of engineers at the city that also reviews it to make sure that it meets the needs of our overall general plan.
And is the city's future development plan articulated in developing all of the Arizona Trust land above the town limits?
Our general plan takes into account just Lake Havasu City's city limits.
But not the outgrowth and development from Trinity? It goes right across Arizona Land Trust?
But it's in the limits of city, it's in the city limits. It's Arizona State Trust land in Lake Havasu City.
Which must be purchased from the Arizona Land Trust.
Correct. Yeah, as all of the land on the island, there's lots of land parcels in the city limits that is owned by the trust.
Has the city looked at alternatives for that second access route out of the development of the estates?
At the current approval of 697 units, that's all that's approved right now. So we don't have any need to look further for another site on what's approved right now. There's nothing else is moving forward until an approval of some sort comes forward. There's no application in with the city. There's nothing in front of us to address any future plans. The reason that we have this located here is, as you know, there was a community meeting a week or two ago. And so we wanted to be in complete clarity that we know that meeting happened. There's no application in the city, and we wanted to depict this so that everybody understands. There, what we're talking about is 23, 24 lots here today. But we didn't want anyone to think that's why we took off the consent agenda, have it as a public hearing, so everybody can understand what is approved. This is the 697 units, and the route through Cherry Tree is sufficient and was sufficient from the vote in 2003 for that. Now, the Cherry Tree residents, they're my number-one complainers on traffic in Lake Havasu. So I got a lot of complaints, but Cherry Tree takes the top.
But I would not be standing here under this council agenda item if that phase-in plan was not submitted to you in a legislative text and as an attachment. I would wait for the open comments at the end.
Yeah, no, great point. And your point's well-taken, but we were trying to just provide clarity because of the timing of that meeting to this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
That was our only intention. Yeah, thank you. The next speaker is Rebecca Liska.
I have the same concerns. So I need to say who I am again. Rebecca Liska, okay, I'm Colt. I have the same concerns that it is put in, in text, and we're sitting here looking at it because with the meetings that I've attended in the past, nothing gets put up there that isn't part of the plan that's being talked about. So I'm wondering why that's even up there. First of all, second of all, we did have a meeting that was a community meeting, that there was a lot of information. And also, I have a problem that nobody from the city was there to talk about any of the things when the city is a very big part of what's going on with all of this. We're talking about water, that we don't have enough water, but we're keeping, building more and more houses. We don't have the roadways to go with it. The roadway is required for them to continue to keep building. From my understanding, is that they do have to have a secondary access in order to keep building, and they have to have that access in before they start. They're building more and more and more, and it keeps going. And all of these things keep getting thrown under the table. It's also been my experience that things that should be going through the city and should be public information are not. Case in point is the Pershur Estates that are next door to me. It's not a big secret that all of that was pushed without anybody in our community knowing. That's an HOA that was put into our equestrian area that doesn't allow horses. How did that happen without zoning happening? There wasn't any permits on any of that until after it was finished. And so I do have a lot of concerns with the way that things are handled in the city, and it seems that a lot keeps going through. There was talk on the radio today about the Bison Project. Why is there talk about a Bison Project when everybody's saying that a Bison Project doesn't exist? The whole problem is that it seems to be some shady issues. And so there's a trust issue with people trusting them. They've gotten the short end of the stick on some of the things. They have a right to develop, they're developers, that's what they're going to do. So we can all be mad at them for developing, but does it do any good? No, it's the city's job to decide what it is that they can develop or can't develop, or anybody else that's sitting on the board that are all in the same group. Everybody in this town crosses one way or the other. This is a very small town. Everybody knows each other. Everybody, for the most part, has known each other for most of their lives. And so it's kind of hard to have things happening and say that it's not happening when we all know each other and know it's happening. So it would be really nice if we could just be honest with what's going on. We all know that there's a water tank that has been gone up behind Bison. We all know that the city needs to build a road to be able to access the water tank. There's also an easement that the city has a lease on to be able to put a water line on Bison to access the water. There's no reason to have to connect to these other developments in order to get the water line in. But for some reason that nobody wants to talk about, there is lying going on because the city is pushing them to use Bison, which I find really interesting. And I find it more interesting that nobody wants to tell the truth about it.
I appreciate your comments, but the only thing that's approved is the 697 units. So I was the one on the radio this morning, that, along with Councilmember Coke, and I mentioned the Bison Project because that is how the media, the local media, has portrayed it. And so I was very upfront about what is happening up there, that the neighborhood meeting happened. Part of our city code requires that a neighborhood meeting happens from the developer's perspective. There was no way to have that meeting from the cities because we don't know what their intentions are to do. There's no application in with the city. When it comes to the water tank up on Bison and the water lines, I don't know, Mr. Knutson, do you have? I don't know anything about that, so.
But, Mr. Mayor, in terms of the water tank, we can speak to that specifically. Excuse me? We can speak to that specifically, but we're, we replace our tanks constantly and making sure that we have fresh water for our residents. Mr. Mayor, if it's okay?
Yes.
So a lot of confusion out there with the start of a neighborhood meeting, right? So conversations have existed on foothills for many, many years. That development was planned 15-plus years ago, 20 years ago. And then at that point, there was entitlements that came from the city that says, developers, no matter who buys and sells that property, the total number of homes that can be built in the foothills is 697. So that's why we kept referring to 697. So it doesn't matter who buys it, who sells it, whatever else, the whole foothills area, only 697 can be built. There's roughly about 90 left that can be constructed. So once 22 go, then there's 22 less that are there. So then we're getting into the, you know, less than 70. If, and then as Councilmember Campbell talked about, if we could all go back in time, I think this entire council, the entire community, when this whole foothills was planned for development, if we could have two points of access, boy, that would have been nice. Mr. Mayor, to your point, we've spoken to the residents on Cherry Tree a lot over the years. I think they're kind of getting numb to it because we hear less and less from them. But there's a lot of traffic that comes down Cherry Tree. And as more homes get built, as more construction takes place, as we get closer to 697, that traffic on, up in foothills is increasing. So that's more traffic on Cherry Tree. We had APX that approached the city, and they wanted to buy this phase that's on the screen, including the 22 that we're just talking about, a final plat. This is normally just a very, a very routine process that's out there. However, if APX wants to build more than 697 homes as part of the entire foothills project, so the 90 that they have, plus they want to come and build another 100 or 200 homes or whatever that looks like, the response from the city at that point is we need to look at a second point of access. So it, that's not something that's, that's, that's approved by the city or recommended by staff. But if you want to look at building more homes, if you, and you want to embrace the, 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 the community to the point where that makes sense, that's a project that makes sense. You can look at a map, you can look at traffic and congestion or the rest, then take a look at that. So that's not the city like developing plans, like as a developer, you need to build these homes here, put this road there, do that over there. The whole process that's, that's, that's transparent from the city's perspective is the ability to do neighborhood meetings. So that, that's what happens. So we have the, the applicant that reaches out and hosts a neighborhood meeting. Were the folks at Bison legally required to be there because we're talking about a property within 300 foot of what's happening? No. But the invitation went out and that was intentional because we wanted to hear back from the residents in the Bison and Colt area if this was something that, that was, was feasible. So the, the developer had those conversations. We were kind of unsure what the reaction was. That's, that's obviously a little, a little bit of humor here because the reaction, the reaction that's coming back is that there is, there's a lot of turmoil, right? This is like, what are we talking about? What's the confusion? Why is there a line on the map? Why is everybody saying Bison? Is there any other options? And all those questions were, have gone unanswered to this point. But I think that if, that the whole reason why that neighborhood meeting took place was because it's the very initial first step for the developer to tip, dip their toe into the, into the pool to see if what the temperature is up, up in Bison. Well, it's pretty apparent what the temperature in, for the neighborhood up in Bison is. And if, and Mr. Mayor, I'm speaking for the council on this end. The council's listening. They're hearing. They see how the meeting went. They're understanding that the conflicts that, that, that exist. Why is Bison Boulevard being spoke about at all? It's, well, it's because it's Bison Boulevard. So the, the whole entire city, we have boulevards and we have avenues. Those are the 84-foot right of ways that exist throughout, throughout the, throughout the community. There's a right of way on Bison Boulevard. If you look at, we can't go back and forth on this one, but if you look at like a map and we can share this and I can hand out a card and, and have conversations if you, if you like. But if there's a major connection that takes place within this project, they're going to have to connect to, or at least proposed to connect, I should say, to an avenue or boulevard. Is that Bison? Is that Geronimo? Is that Highway 95? Is that, what does that, what does that look like?
State Trust Land is already considering Loadstar. If you call State Trust Land, they've already said that it has been presented already.
That's because APX reached out to state land and, and talked about different options that are out there.
Well, they're still considering using that. And if this is a dead issue about them not having to create a secondary road to come in, why is that on record with State Trust Land?
So.
You're saying that they're, you're saying that they're not required to bring in a secondary road, but it says right there that they are. And they've already presented Tierra Vista. They've already presented Loadstar. And now you guys are still saying that Bison wasn't ever on there, but we had a very specific community meeting and for there even to be something called the Bison Project that's being talked about on the radio shows that there has been discussion of that. So that's not something that we're making up.
Yeah, but Ms. Liska, I mentioned it as Bison Project in response to the media, that what, what people read that we're not in the meeting so that everyone has access to those, those airwaves. And so it was what they read for the perception of the people that are not involved that live in that neighborhood. So the, the 697 units, they are exploring to, to expand to allow for more than 697 units. They have a, a really large lift to do that. They have to get approval from state lands. They have to get approval from planning and zoning. They have to get approval from the city council. This is not anywhere near close. Like I said, we don't have an approval. We don't even know how many units they're wanting to do. We don't know any of those types of things. So once there's a, a permit in place, I think we're being as open and transparent. I, I've shared everything I know about this, this project on, on this front with you. And we're, we're answering all of the questions that you have this evening that are completely unrelated to putting lines on, on a map to send to the county recorder's office. But I mean, do you have any other questions that we can address for you before we yield the time to someone else?
I have a question.
Councilmember Campbell?
Who got the invitations? Did, did we get an email from the, I, Ms. Liska? I knew nothing about it. I don't even know what the word Bison Project is.
There were only about 25 that were sent out initially from the lawyer and they were not sent to everybody. They were supposed to have been sent out to the people that live within 300 feet. I did not receive one either. I actually found out from one of my neighbors.
Yeah. So I apologize I wasn't there because this is a very important topic to me as well.
Yeah, you, you'll get a chance at the microphone when you're done. Is that your question, Councilmember Campbell?
We printed and distributed. Gil, Gil Sims called me and made me aware of it and we printed and distributed to make sure that everyone was aware because the way that it came across was that this is something that is already presented and they were talking about it, trying to figure this out. So we were concerned with what it is, obviously for obvious reasons with past experience in that, that area. And there's a huge traffic concern. There's a lot of concerns for the safety of the citizens there. You know, Bison Boulevard is a blind turn going both directions. So you would need to put in a stoplight there as well. And we're talking about impacting everybody's homes, everybody's traffic patterns, everybody's front yards, you know, the whole way from, you know, probably four or five homes down Kiowa to say it the other way because you have a blind corner. You're going to have to install sidewalks, which is going to start putting eminent domain. And if you're going to try and widen Bison, there is not enough of the city access on both sides that's there. There's not enough to put that in. You are going to have to claim eminent domain on people's personal property in order to make it safe to even use. So I'm not sure why anybody would ever even consider it.
Well, I think you're answering your own question. So it hasn't been in front of us yet at all to, to do this. So we, we all have common sense as well.
The thing is that we don't, we don't trust that. I'll, I will stop what it is that I have to say now. I think that I've made the point. But the bigger issue is that these things have been going on without the public knowing and that needs to stop.
Sure. The, just to answer your question on HOAs, HOAs actually have a whole lot of power. They have more power in most cases than the city council that you've elected. So if a property owner wants to put in an HOA, they're able to do so with whatever requirements that they want to put in there. Like an HOA, for example, can prohibit short-term rentals. The city cannot. So they, they do have some abilities to do things that, and they don't have to get local jurisdiction approval to put in their HOA or get their bylaws approved.
To save everybody's time, I'm not going to completely answer that.
Sure.
But you know that there's more layers than that.
Yeah, we can talk offline as well and, and unpack what that is. So, all right. Thank you, Ms. Liska. Ms. Sims? Ms. Sims, you're actually the next speaker. Did you still want to, you gotta get to a microphone if you want to speak. Okay.
I think Becca has covered the major points, so I'm going to pass.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sims. For those at home have said that her points were covered by Ms. Liska and so we'll move on to the next speaker. We have one last person that signed up. We're not sure if this was for the calls to the public or for this item. Is it Gary Nicholson or Nick? Yes.
Nickerson.
Nickerson, sorry about that. Was it for this item?
You'll get to know me before this is over.
I have a couple of questions. Okay, number one, I was in search and rescue 15 years and I rescued a bunch of people up there where this is going on. That state land, I would like to know how the state land was purchased, who it was purchased from and who profited from it? Because I own that land, you own that land. How did all that happen without anybody being notified? Nothing to you guys, but developers come in here and just abuse the town and then move somewhere else. Excuse my French, but.
Sure.
That's what happens. So, and who's going to pay for the sewer and the water for that?
Yeah, so you, let me just explain state trust lands because it, you and I don't own state trust lands. So the way state trust lands, it was given to the state of statehood. State trust lands are all over, all over the state of Arizona. Most of the states in the West got, got land. There's 12 beneficiaries to Arizona State Trust Land. The most notable being the K-12 education system, but there, there's 11 others. With that, their entire mission is the best use of the property. So when it's, when we say best use, it's about money, not about do we think a grocery store should go, go here, should be open to public space? None of those. It's about money and how much money they can make for their trust. And so state trust lands, if you were going to buy state trust lands, you have to petition the state trust board. You then go in front of an auction at the county courthouse. It's a very public process that is required and it's a bid on the county courthouse steps and the highest bidder is the one that gets that. You then would have to go through, if you're successful with all of that, you then would have to go to the local jurisdiction and get it zoned to whatever it is that you're looking to do with that property. So if you're looking to put homes on it, you'd have to get a single family designation if you want a commercial, you'd have to get a commercial designation, whatever that might be. And that goes through the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the city council for, for that to occur. So the, the land you're talking about up in this area has not been purchased. It's, it's not been purchased. It's owned by the state trust land. If someone was to do it, they'd have to go through this process and possibly when they get to the courthouse, they could be outbid even though they're the ones that the applicant. There, there's other bidders that will go there and they potentially could get outbid on whatever it is and someone else could buy it for some other use that they're taking the risk that they're going to get associated zoning with it.
Okay, so are you going to have to annex that into the city since the city stopped at the end of Bison? Why are you guys even dealing with it?
Yeah, there is, it's, it's, it's within the city limits up in that area. So it's not.
Not according to my maps, it's not.
Yeah, so it, it gets a little tricky up there with, there's some BLM lands, some state land, and then there's private holdings as well in that area.
Okay. What about the sewer and the water? Who pays for all the updating? The city?
Yeah, well, that's not in front of us right now, but it would be the developer generally is how those things work.
Well, the next item on the thing, that's why.
Is a lift station and that, that, on that next item, you'll learn that the developer's paying for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Renee wants like.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Sims? Yeah, please. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm sorry, but I do have a few questions because I am seriously getting very confused. I received a letter which I shared with Becca and we shared with many others about a neighborhood meeting to discuss a proposal to widen Bison, which made absolutely no sense. Becca and I discovered in going around and distributing copies of these letters, there were people who live on Bison, did not receive them. There were people who lived just around a corner who did not receive them. There were people in new homes whose backyards are on Bison, but their street addresses other than Bison, they never received them. There was quite a bit of outrage. And some of my confusion, you keep referring to 24 homes.
That's what we're here tonight for.
Well, we were told in the neighborhood meeting and in the letter from their attorney that it was 121 homes. How has that changed? We keep hearing different stories. It depends on who you listen to and who's talking. It's this, well, oh no, but then it's that. Well, what is the real story? And you're talking 697 homes. Okay. You're seeking for, they're seeking for an approval of the plat for those homes. I realize these are going to be built in future phases, but I also understand that they have been instructed, they have to complete the secondary access for that area prior to any permits being issued. Is that correct?
Well, I think the confusion that we're having here is that, that you guys are here and concerned about a future development that we have no permit on and no plans on. What we're talking about, if you go back to the screen that we just had on with the red around it. So we're talking about this, this blue area, which is currently in the approved 697 lots from 2003. This, this area with the red dot around it is the 24 homes that we're talking about specifically for tonight. All of this area shaded in blue though, is the 697. Over to the left where, where the gray boxes are with the, the pointed arrows to, to that future phase, that's what I believe you're talking about. We have nothing in front of us for that. We have no application.
They've already graded it.
That they can, you can have the ability to do grading at risk if you want. It's, that's the, that's the risk that they took, but that's not in front of us right now. They have no approvals for it. When it comes to the 300 feet, the code is 300 feet. So please, 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 you gotta listen and then you'll have your chance at the microphone. But the 300 feet radius, I, I'm not sure possibly the developer can answer how, how they chose what addresses got the, the thing, but the code says 300 feet radius. So I usually use GIS to, to do that and potentially one neighbor got it and the other didn't get it. But it's not a, it's a requirement of the city to do 300 foot radius. So we're not involved in that at all.
They were well within that 300 and some feet. I was actually further where I live on Colt than some of them whose backyards are on Bison.
Agreed. I believe Mr. Knudsen mentioned that, that he said widen it. You need to make sure that the, the neighborhood invites it.
And some of those people could potentially be losing retaining walls and all of the landscaping they have just put in because those were just newly constructed homes.
And if, if an application comes in front of us, makes it, makes its way through planning and zoning and gets to council, those are things that, that will be considered at that time. That's not in front of us right now.
Mr. Mayor? You keep referring to the fact, Mr. Knudsen, that Bison is a boulevard. Why is it a boulevard? It has an existing 20-foot wide paved, unmaintained street with no curb scudders, anything, lots of potholes. And this is a boulevard to where? To what? For what? It's, the only thing it borders.
It's been named Bison Boulevard for, for many, many years. So you talk about the, the, the.
Well, many, many years.
People before us did. That's, that's what they did.
Prior to all of the development that has been approved and gone in there. So why wasn't this considered a little more strongly before all of that development was allowed to proceed? If it's been Bison Boulevard for that many years? This seems to be poor planning on the part of the city and negligent planning and lack of consideration for the residents of this city.
I appreciate your comments. Yeah. Would anyone else like to, to address the city council on this item?
Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
Yeah. You can, you can make, start making your way to the podium. Councilmember Dolan?
I'm Sheila Murphy and I have my new card. We're not. Did you go into the open session? My card's out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, I got you.
Okay, my name is Sheila Murphy and I do live on Bison Boulevard. Some of you guys might know me because I own Pet Oasis Doggy Daycare and Spa. When I almost got shut down, I live at 481 Bison Boulevard. I got almost shut down two years ago. Why? Because of traffic. I had too many people coming to my home. I had to get a special use permit and that was passed because in the equestrian area, we could do what we were doing. I could be a doggy daycare. I could have a boarding facility. I just want to give a little bit background. I just want to give a little bit background. I'm a mobile groomer. I go around everywhere in this town. I've been up Cherry Tree and I have been to where that approved preliminary plat is. It's graded. We're not talking about the proposed final plat today. That's graded too. So me as a business person, when I expanded my business, I had to put up a business plan. I had to put up what I was doing just like this to get approval. And I had to come in front of the planning commission and everything else. You guys are considering the 24, 29 homes that are being put in, in the red section. I, as a business person, would not have graded the entire other two tracks, three tracks, if I already didn't know that I was already approved, that those other 121 houses are going to go through. So where is the transparency from the City Council? Because it sounds like you're gonna do the final plat tonight for the 24 homes, but you already have someplace else, those other, because you've already preliminary approved it and the developer has graded it. They've already got the roads in. They've got all of the, the way that the houses are going to set up, the lots and everything else. That's already up there. And if you look at the plans under pre-approved, it's already set up there. So my question is, I'm not worried about the Bison bypass because they said, you know, at our meeting that we had, the, the developer's gonna pay for up to Bison Boulevard so that they can have access. You're saying you don't know anything about this. It's got plots. It's got the preliminaries already in place. My question to them was, who's paying for the widening of Bison? Who's gonna pay for? And their comment was, the city and the taxpayers. Not, and you guys don't know anything about it? There's no transparency.
Well, we're being as open as we can. We, there's no application in front of us. So yes, the preliminary plat has been approved on, on the area shaded in blue. That takes you up to the 697 units that the council in 2003 adopted.
According to everything that I have read and the way that it was presented to us in this meeting, only the 24. There is already the 900 and something minus the 24. That extra blue was 121 additional.
Yeah, so that's not the case, but that, these, these are, it's 90 or 69 units, excuse me, shaded here in the blue, that will get to the total of the 697. So feel free to call me this week and we can sit down and we can, we can talk this through and, and maybe clear up some confusion that, that you might have on this.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
Thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just we want to make sure we get everything 100% locked down. You said that everything in blue would get us close to the 697. If you go back to that slide, everything in blue, Mr. Gilbert or Mr. Trueman, is, is that, what does that get, what's that number get us to?
So that, that is 69 that are preliminary platted, which leaves the 21, therefore if you look.
So 21 more plus.
21, there's 21 more left to get to the 697 that have not been preliminary platted.
Okay.
So they could do that anywhere on the left, say, and have 21 more, they could come back for 21 more to do, go through a preliminary plat.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. In the initial report earlier, I understood it to be 69. So 69 is what's.
They have 90 allotted for this area. They're preliminary platted 69, which leaves 21 left.
Of the total 697.
A total 697.
Okay. And that's, and that's, that's all that there is. Okay.
And why I have you here, I just want to make it clear that this plan here is just shown as a phasing plan or an area plan. This plan here is the actual final plat. This is what is being approved tonight is this document that you see in front of us here. That is the final plat, which is 24 lots of the 69 that have been preliminary platted. So this document is what will be approved by City Council tonight as the final plat. This is just simply a phasing plan or area plan showing and delineating this area designated for the six, the 90 lots of the 697 that were designated for this area right here. So technically, they could have spread the 90 lots that they have left of the 697 for this area. They could have did those lots however they wanted within this eight phases they're showing. They could have, they could have made two acre lots or three acres, whatever they could have got in that 90 lots, but they chose not to and they chose the just preliminary plat 69 at this time, which leaves 21, which leaves us to this final plat of the first phase of that preliminary plat. Hopefully that sums it up and clarifies that this is the document that is being approved tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Trueman, and thank you for the clarification. So I didn't realize there was an additional, I knew 697, additional 21, so thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan?
Yeah. I'm gonna try to choose my words right wisely. I, we do hear you. We do hear you. And if this was an issue voting right now on whether we would decide to do this, my vote would be a no. But, but we, but we do hear you and we do listen, but you can, it's, it's always fun being up here accused of being corrupt and you're lining the pockets and all this stuff. And I, I was born and raised in Lake Havasu. I know that area very well. Well, I, I raised my family here. I've been on pretty much every single board here in Lake Havasu, so please trust me a little bit until I give you a reason not to trust me. But, I mean, the clapping and the booing and the, we do hear you, but we also hear that too. And I, I understand there's a lot of confusion in here and at least with me, just because I don't understand something doesn't mean it's wrong and somebody else is wrong. I would love to sit down with anybody and explain why, you know, why, my understanding of this, I don't mind doing it as a group or individually, you know, maybe we can put some clarity. The developer is a totally separate thing, you know, and I think sometimes people want government to, stay out of my life, stay out of my life. Why didn't you watch and do exactly what they said they would do? And it's like, but, but we don't do that. So we can't have transparency over a developer. If a developer wants to come in and say they're gonna do whatever, you know, they can come to the city and say, hey, I want to put a McDonald's in a residential area, you know, whatever conversations they have, they can say, I don't think council's gonna approve that, you know, but until they bring something to us and says, hey, we want to do this, whatever talks they have, and I think their talks have been, I don't think you're gonna get anywhere with council. I don't think, you know, councils listen to the people on, on Cherry Tree. They, they, they're accepting what a previous council has given them, that there's 697 houses that can be built up there. And if there's, even the possibility of one more house going up there is gonna, for one, probably might, might involve another road. So they're looking to see what that road might be. We didn't tell them to do that. That's not our meeting. I didn't get invited to it. I don't know if the city got invited to it, but that's, they can do whatever they want. They can have their meetings. I kind of wish the newspaper who's left, I kind of wish they would, if they're gonna go on Facebook and share this information and then lock it down so people can't really read it and then people just read the title and they get all worked up over something. But like I said, I'm at Campbell Cove. I can get you guys my phone, the phone number after the meeting. I'd love to sit down and talk about this. I can assure you, this is just a technicality for a plat for an area that's already going on. And we're gonna have another agenda item after this that is also with this. They can, they're free to develop those, those lots up to that magic number of 697. 698 doesn't exist, they can't do it. And if they want to do it, they have to come in front of us and we are the ones that are gonna basically say yes or no. But once something comes in, we don't have anything, so I can't say what if, and you don't want me to be big, big brother and be, what are you guys doing? What's going on? Until they submit something to the city, we can't do anything. So I would love to sit down with anybody, but please just, just walk away from this, know we heard you, but please be a little bit more respectful. We, we are here, I think everybody up here is for the right reasons and we do hear you. And like I said, if this was a question right now, I, I think we can all imagine which way this would go. The meeting was to see what you guys thought about it. I think we all heard Bison's not that fond of having a road going through there. So the fact of the matter, there are some facts, it is a boulevard, there are certain things, whether that's something we were to do in the future, I don't know. But that's not, we haven't even thought about, that's something they might want to do. So like I said, I just, just to walk away, we do hear you and then if anyone wants to sit down and talk with me, I'd love to explain it in more detail, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Dolan. This still is a quick moment. Would anyone else like to address the council? Yeah, please just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record.
Good evening, Council. My name's Jim Tatke. I am a Colt resident, in Justoffo Bison. My, I just heard tonight, excuse me, I just heard tonight that this project, 697 homes, was approved 20 years ago in 2003. I assume that there was a water impact study conducted at that time. Does that go on for in perpetuity, the waters, impact study, or is there gonna be a, a recent, more current study?
Yeah, so when it comes to water, we, we, from Lake Havasu City, we provide municipal water. So we know our water entitlements based on entitlements that we have secured over the years. And so we, we manage that process. So other areas you might read in the news, they need a 100 year assured supply of water, those types of things. That's all managed with, with Lake Havasu City based on the water entitlements we have for our entire, our entire community, which we've been very good planners of that to ensure that we have water entitlements for the future build out of our community.
So you're comfortable that, that study conducted 20 years ago is still applicable today?
Yeah, for our community. We do, we do update studies all of the time about water availability, resources, all of the time to make sure our water, our water master plan is, is recently was updated. So we do those all of the time for the community as a whole.
Okay. I understand that, that 121 unit project officially, you don't, you guys don't know anything about that yet.
Correct.
But at the community meeting, when water was, when the gentleman putting on the, the presentation was questioned about the adequacy of water, he's, he just shrugged it off saying, well, the city hasn't mentioned it, so we assume, assume that there isn't going to be a problem. That's a big assumption.
We weren't invited to that meeting. It's not our meeting.
I understand that, I understand. I just want you to know.
I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you.
The, also the traffic studies, now, are there going to be for this 24 home development? Are there recent traffic studies or are these 20 years old also?
They've, as was mentioned, the developer has already done two traffic studies for that area, but they have council authority and approval from 2003 to do these, these units up to 697 units.
So we, we have to live with a decision that was made 20 years ago.
Yeah, it was done by ordinance, correct.
It'd be like you buying a lot and then the city changing its mind that you can't build a home. You own that property with certain entitlements. We have to allow that. I, I mean, I mean, we don't have to. We could say no, I guess, but man, would that not be fair? If you bought a lot to build a home on and I said, ah, I don't like it there, dope, you can't do that. So they have certain entitlements that, that they purchased and they have the right to.
And I understand your, your argument, Councilman, but the, the fact that I bought that lot does not preclude you from making changes in the ordinances to meet current times.
The only thing they're asking, I mean, they're not asking for any changes here.
Well, no, we are.
Yeah.
You know, I, I'm just challenging your argument. I'm sorry. I understand, I bought a lot 20 years ago and you're saying that you can't stop me from building it.
I mean, I'm a personal rights advocate, a personal property rights advocate. You should be able to do what you want with your property and they have those entitlements to get there. That has been negotiated. And, and I'm, I'm like.
But let's be specific, we're talking about what's on the screen right there.
This right here. They have every right to do this.
The additional, what you just had your citizen meeting about, that's not what he's saying.
I understand that.
Those entitlements don't exist yet, so he's only speaking as to this. I just don't want it to sound like.
No, and I appreciate you clear because I, I simplify things.
It's just that I have a hard time understanding. I understand that we're speaking about the 24 and that was approved 20 years ago. I just have a hard time understanding, you know, what, water issues are invoked today. So it's a big concern of everybody. It should be a big concern of this community. And I think that it deserves a reevaluation. I, I don't know how legally that can be accomplished, but I think that it, it's something that should be considered.
I appreciate your comments and we reevaluate regularly on that. Would anyone else like to address the City Council on this item? Yeah, please just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record. Yeah, you can, you can queue up as well. It saves a few, a few minutes if you queue up behind.
It's fine. How you doing? Hi, Council. I was just curious, is it possible to show the map from a Google image perspective? Because that is just a bunch of weird lines and that doesn't say the names of the streets where like, where you can match it up with the other. There's like no matching up. So like I have no idea what area, you're seeing tonight's thing is about what's in the red, not the blue, correct?
On this particular map.
Okay, so when I look at that on my Google phone, map thing, whatever, Apple map, the things in the blue are already graded and already done. And then there's gotta be a road that goes through to get to the red side, which on the maps doesn't, that road's not there and it doesn't show and I'm not seeing that, which is obviously a little bit like that. But the perspective of what I'm seeing, there is completely different than what I'm seeing on Google. If I'm going to go to my friend's house on Cherry Tree Boulevard, it looks completely different than that.
The maps we have are the ones that you've seen tonight. That, that's what we're prepared to.
Okay, but they're not, they don't match up on the Apple.
Okay.
And then I was just wondering why we couldn't see it that way, like to make it match up. But you can't.
Ms. Twy, I don't know what you're looking at on your phone. We, the maps we're prepared with this evening are the ones that, that are here.
Okay. Well, I, I went to the map thing on your phone and just scrolled back to Cherry Tree and opened that up and it doesn't match what I see to what you're being presented. That, that's what I'm looking at. The differences of what you're showing versus what I see on Apple map. Second, I was wondering about how streetlights, if are streetlights required back there?
There, there are no requirements for streetlights in our community.
Yeah, you are different on the whole dark sky thing. I understand that. And then I was wondering if I can ask the applicant a really weird question.
Ms. Twy, ask, ask your question, we'll see if we can get you an answer.
What does M D C A B stand for?
The, the name of the, the business that is the applicant?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I was wondering what the M D C A B was.
Yeah. Is the applicant prepared to answer that question?
Yes, it is the, the name of the investors. There's, there's four investors and it's just the first name of the four investors. I do want to add too, I am open to speaking to anybody as well at any time. That was, we may not have made that meeting perfect and we apologize for that 100%. With that being said, I am open to hearing from you. We are ears, that's why we had the meeting. And so I just wanted to make that clear to anybody who would want to speak to me, more than welcome to, I'll take the time, take anybody to lunch, would love to hear from you. And so, yeah, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Rod Schultz. I don't want to beat you up anymore, I think you already got. But the traffic plans you've had already, I understand those are from 20 years ago on Cherry Tree, the stuff that they're trying to propose now on Bison. How long did the traffic study go on that? Two weeks, two months, six months, a year?
Yeah, great question. Again, the item's not in front of us, so we, I've not seen those studies at all. So I mean, it's just from what the applicant, I know, but state law is very specific. We've, we've, we've kind of crossed the line of, of what you can talk about on an agenda item, because we're trying to bring in something that's not even before us. So grab them afterwards and ask that question. Okay, thank you, Mr. Schultz.
Gary Haddock, 4001 Colt Drive. And I just, I know you're here to approve this 24 lots. I just have a couple of observations. I believe that the, the infrastructure, when this whole project was built, didn't take into consideration a second access out of that project. A good example, if anybody remembers a couple of years ago, Paradise, California, had fire with a one way in and no one way out. Lahaina, just recently, the same situation. So I think we're concerned about this access road that will eventually be needed. And I know you said that the developers, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna grade lots and worry about that infrastructure later. But when you're talking about Bison, coming down Bison where it dead ends into Kiowa, off to the right, there are several streets that, that feed into this community. We have Colt, we have Pasail de Oore, we have Vega, we have Duke. And if any of the council members haven't been up in that area, you might want to take a ride up there and see what we have because if this road was developed, people coming down Bison, if they're gonna go out to Walmart or to Home Depot, they're gonna start making right-hand turns to go down to Colt or to Desert Garden to eventually work their way over to North Palaverty. So this, I'm pretty sure this whole group here tonight is expressing the same concern about what this future access into this community is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. And just so everyone knows, up in the foothills, they are required to have sprinklers, so. So all of the homes in the foothills do have sprinklers.
Thank you. My name is Emiliano Torres. I live up in the foothills. If you could go back to the phasing plan map. Between Cherry Tree and the new proposed development, that's no longer a wash. That's a heavy equipment parking lot and a gravel yard. So I wish you would take a look at it. And thank you for emphasizing that the 697 number is not obsolete as we were told at the meeting a couple of weeks ago. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for any discussion or possible motion. Vice, we'll start with Councilmember Dolan and then Vice Mayor Lane.
I'll make a motion unless you want me to give a speech.
I believe this, Vice Mayor Lane, do you have comments or questions?
Thank you. I do have comments. If you could go back to the page that had the red dotted line on it. And while we're doing that, I want to say, you know, we've got way outside what this agenda item is, which we are not even approving any new houses. We're not approving any new lots. Not that one, the the final plot. There you go. Thank you. Really what we're here, because there's so much confusion, all we're doing is making sure that the lines for each of the properties are correct. So when somebody buys that house, they know where their property lines are. That's really all we're discussing here tonight. We've kind of gone off on the side because there was a public meeting by a developer and there was an article in the newspaper about future stuff. So I kind of want to go along with with what Councilmember Dolan had to say earlier is, you guys all know, for most of you, you know us. There are several of you have my phone number. We talk, you know, I'm always open to listen to what you have to say. And I will, I'll take some of the heat for some of this. So we, 20 years ago, before any of us in this room were ever elected to office or even before any of the staff was was on the city staff, these homes and the 697 houses were approved. Now we deal with the aftermath and we have one access. Seven years ago, you all elected me to come here and to represent you. And I heard a lot about Cherry Tree and the access. I spoke to the then-city manager. I've spoken to this city manager. And what I had said was, I myself will not approve any other houses other than the 697 that were already approved because, as Councilmember Moses said, we can't, they own the land now and it was approved for that. We can't now, after they've done this and bought the land, say, sorry, times change. You can't have a, can't have a house on your lot. So what I had told them then and I, and what what I've spoken to this city manager about, and I think all the other council members agree with me, we have said, if a developer comes and says they want to build more houses other than those 697, they're going to have to come up with a way to have a secondary access up there. They've got to figure it out. I've heard comments about, well, why isn't the city doing it? Why isn't the city building a road? When you say the city, you're talking taxpayers. The taxpayers shouldn't pay for any of the infrastructure that's going up. The developers should. The developers got to do the traffic studies. The developers got to put in the infrastructure. The developers got to build a secondary road. One of the places that they were looking at was Bison. There's going to be lots of places for them to look at. Obviously, the Bison is not something that they would have an easy process to do. We understand that. I think they understand that. So this is going to be a long, drawn-out process. If they decide they want to build, they're going to have to come up with a way to have a secondary access. Where that's going to be, we have no idea. But in reality, it has nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight. We're just talking about where are the lines on the map so when somebody buys this house, they know where their property lines are. You know, Becca, you've talked to me lots of times. I've never lied to you and never will. Anybody here can call me at any time. My phone number's in the paper every Sunday, my cellphone. I got phone calls today from some people that are in this room right now to talk about these issues. And we talked about it and said, look, yes, we understand your frustration. We hear it. If it was me, I'd be angry too. That it's the developers' problem. It's not your problem. It's not my problem. It's those three gentlemen in the back of the room right there that have to come up with a solution. And they're trying to come up with a solution. They are all locals here as well. They've got family here. They're trying to make this community a better place. They're not from out of town. They're not going to build and then leave. They are here and they came and they talked to you. Obviously, it's not working. They're going to have to do something different. I think they understand that. Just want to let everybody relax a little bit and realize what you think is happening. And we're trying to be as transparent as we can. And the city attorney has to cut me off if I get out too far outside. But we can kind of link all this together. She's there to make sure we stay legal here. It is, yeah, all we're doing is keeping.
We're already crossing that line a little bit.
We're doing, but all we're here tonight is to put these lines on here. And if anybody wants to talk to me about this process later, give me a call. Be more happy to talk to you.
First person to do a motion would be, would be the winner tonight.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask one question?
Yeah, Councilmember.
If we don't approve this tonight, what can they do with this property, anything?
Yeah, again, that's a great question. I don't know, Mr. Gilbert, if you can answer. I mean, they're literally just putting lines on a map to set the recorder of what the lots are. So when you buy a lot.
I understand if we don't approve this, can they do anything with this? If if we don't approve this tonight, what can they do on that property the way it is sitting right now?
They would, they would not be able to do anything until the final plat's approved. They would not be able to follow through, but they've spent all the money, met all the requirements, and they already have their entitlements from previous ordinances that that this board has passed over the years.
OK, I understand. I'm just clarifying, like, they can't, if we don't approve this, they will just sit with an empty lot up there. They can't do anything with it. OK, thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Moses.
I move to approve a final subdivision plat for tract 2391 Trinity at Havasu Foothills Estates, a subdivision of 24 residential lots in the Residential Estates Plan Development R E P D District.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, thank you. We'll now move on to item 7.4, Approval of a Development Agreement for Tract 2391 Trinity at Havasu Foothills Estate with M D C A B LLC regarding the sewer lift station in Forest Main for the development. Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief on this. I don't have a slide for this one because it's just a development agreement. But since the subdivision will be served by a private wastewater lift station in Forest Main, developers are required to enter into a development agreement to address the responsibilities associated with the installment and maintenance of those facilities. Development agreement includes developers' responsibilities to install and maintain the wastewater lift station in Forest Main. And the reason that's required is because the the grades and elevations don't work out in such a way that the sewers can be gravity flow.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Gilbert?
It's just, Mr. Mayor. So just to clarify, so they install it, pay to install it, and then they maintain it. And it, so it pumps into our system eventually, but they they pay for everything.
That's correct.
I like that. Let's do that.
Would anyone else have any questions before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing as well. You don't have to sign up, but we did have one. Ms. Liska, did you have any additional comments on this item? The development agreement? OK, all right, perfect. If anyone else would like to address the council on this item, please make your way to the podium, state your name.
Yes, sir. Emiliano Torres, just a question. They will pay for maintenance of this facility forever or till development is completed?
Mr. Mayor, the development agreement addresses the maintenance and the ongoing maintenance and improvement requirements for this lift station. And it is private, they will pay for it.
Would anyone else like to address the council on this item? Yeah, forever. Yes. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing, bring it back to council for any additional questions or motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion.
Please.
I move to approve the development agreement for Tract 2391 Trinity of Havasu Foothills Estates with M D C A B LLC regarding the sewer lift station in Forest Main for the development.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, the next item is item 7.5, Award Bid for the London Bridge Pier D Repair Rebid Project to Restruction, a Division of Structural Preservation Systems LLC. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, City Council. It's good to be here tonight, Honorable Secretary of Council. The exciting part of the council meeting now begins. I'm here tonight to talk to you about a recommendation for award of the London Bridge Pier D Repair Project Construction Recommendation. As most of you are familiar, our city has a beautiful London Bridge that we're very proud of. And we have been doing a great job of maintaining it. What we've ran into is in Pier D, which is on the island side, has experienced some water infiltration that fluctuates with the level of the water in the reservoir. And the Arizona Department of Transportation has the contract to do the inspection, which they do biannually. And for the last three, they've noted that there's water in there. And there's a little concern, not a little, but there's concern that the bearing pad that rests inside, and I'll show a picture of that, let's just go there. So inside the pier, which, you know, there's this myth that the bridge is solid, but it's not. And inside Pier D, this is actually a picture on the left of myself and our consulting engineer, Kim Lee Horn. We went down into the pier. At that time, it had approximately 30 inches of water. And to the right, their lower right, is the bearing pads that the bridge rests on, which allows it to to move as needed due to weather. And there's concern that those bearing pads are going to experience some rusting and not be able to move as well as we would like. Now, the bridge is safe. Let's make sure we get that out there. No worries about that. But it does deal with just kind of an engineering aspect, technical aspect of this needs to be, the moisture needs to be removed from the pier. So our project schedule is 90 calendar days, should the council choose to award this tonight. We plan on starting probably mid-October, first part of November. The bridge is is very hot this time of the year. You don't want to be inside there very long. And then we we do have a window with the bats that are in there that we've got to be observant in terms of pregnant bats. So we can't disturb the pregnant bats. But moving along, so we're aware of that. We're moving along. So the engineers estimate on this was a base bid plus force account was 300,000. We actually were not to bid originally and received no bids. So we went back out, did a rebid, and we received one bid from Restructure, who is a Division of Structural Preservation Systems. And that bid was the amount of 372,878.98. Due diligence was done on this company. They're very reputable. They've done similar work. Even though we could firmly say that there is not another project across the nation like this one, it is very unique. They have done some repair work in skies, swimming pool leaks and skyscrapers and things like that. They've proven that they can take care of this stuff. So I am recommending a construction contract be awarded to Restructure, a Division of Structural Preservation Systems. And I'll take questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there any questions for members of the council for Mr. Hart on this item? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Dolan?
Very disappointed nobody asked if the London Bridge is falling down.
It's a very structural solid bridge that is not falling down.
Totally set up for that question and nobody asked it. So, and I didn't, so that doesn't count. I move to award the bid for the London Bridge Pier D Repair Rebid Project to Restructure, a Division of Structural Preservation Systems LLC in the amount of 372,879.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, next item is item 7.6 is a ward bid for the Mulberry Wastewater Treatment Plant, Aeration Basin Structural and Motor Control Center Upgrades Project to Kenny, excuse me, Kenny Constructions LLC. Mr. Hart?
Good evening once again, Honorable Mayor and City Council. We're going to talk to you about wastewater now, which is always exciting as well, at least in my world. This project here is occurring at our Mulberry Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is on the south side of the city. Really involves two components. The first is we're going to be addressing some some fracturing of the surface of the irrigation basins. In fact, I'll just show the picture there. You can see on the left, there's some little bit of fracturing going there. And there is a bridge that circles the two basins. And there's been over the years, some, a little bit of facial stressing going on, which causes the the structure that rotates around to to vibrate a little bit. And we've had to replace the wheels on them. So this project's going to address those cracking and we're going to put a steel cap all the way around that will distribute the weight more evenly. And then we're going to take advantage of being there. We're going to upgrade what we call our MCC, which is our Existing Motor Control Center. It's definitely served its time and now it needs to be, we're going to take it out of the sun. We're going to put it in a prefabricated building that's a small building. It's going to be air-conditioned and it's going to have all-new equipment. So it's going to last us quite well. The project itself is 240 calendar days, which is eight months. We're anticipating completion in September 2024. And that's because when it's, council chooses to award this project tonight, we will enter into a contract with the the company and we will be having to issue adnose to proceed for materials because the materials are about six months out. And so that's going to take some time. Hopefully, it'll come sooner. The engineers' base bid plus force account, plus we had an alternative, one and two, was at 1,201,600. We were very happy to receive five bids on this project, which is encouraging because it's it's good for the city to have, to see the interest of the contractors out there. Kenny Construction came in at 1,297,964. And then you can see the other four companies that are listed there. So in looking at our base bid plus force account plus the two added alternates, the Kenny Construction was within our budget and and fairly close to our engineers' estimate. And we would like to move forward and award also the added to alternates as well. So I'm recommending that construction contract be awarded to Kenny Construction LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there any questions for members of the council for Mr. Hart?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Dolan?
I think this is something to, good to put right in front of the water rate study, you know, because it gives people that visual of what? It costs 1.3 million dollars to replace a poopy swimming pool? But that's literally, this is one example of one thing in our infrastructure. And if we don't take care of this, it's a heck of a lot cheaper than putting a new one in. So I just think this is a great visual to see what, you know, really that much money. But that's what it costs when you run your own water company. So thank you.
Yeah, that's a great point from the conversation we had earlier today. So yeah, thank you for for correlating that. Any additional questions or comments for members of the council before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the council on this item? Yeah, please, Ms. Sims, just make your way to the podium. The folks at home can't hear the question though. So yeah, just grab on yourself on the mic. Thank you.
Where does Kenny Company come from?
You're going to put me right on the spot, aren't you? I will tell you. They're they're out of Phoenix.
OK. They're made in the USA.
OK, I see where you're going.
Excellent. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I move to award the bid for the Mulberry WWTP Aeration Basin Structural Aeration Basin Structural and MCC Upgrade Projects to Kinney Construction LLC in the amount of 1,297,964.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hart. All right, our final public hearing is item 7.7, approve the purchase of seven C2500 replacement vehicles from Midway Chevrolet Company One LLC. Mr. Frosley?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, good evening. As you just indicated, this item is the purchase of seven vehicles to replace seven vehicles that we currently have in the Public Works fleet, as well as the Parks and Recreation Fleet. Five of the seven are going to Parks and Recreations and Public Works will get two. All of these vehicles are approximately 18 years old or older and their maintenance costs over the years are, have currently, while they are approaching their original purchase price or we have actually exceeded that already. The average mileage for these seven vehicles is 90,594. Typically, you would see us up here asking for permission to purchase Ford vehicles. We're not doing that tonight. Ford isn't producing vehicles at the rate they used to. And they've actually told us that they cannot even guarantee any orders that we place with them now and into the future. So we're looking at other options. Chevrolet has been very accommodating. They've actually told us, if we place, they're going to, they're going to start accepting orders in the September, October range. And if we can get these approved tonight and ordered, we could take delivery of them within six months. So we could actually maybe receive some vehicles the same fiscal year we placed the order, which hasn't happened in several years. All of these vehicles were included in the budget that was recently passed a few months ago by the city council. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Frosley. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Frosley? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Please.
I move to approve the purchase of seven replacement vehicles from Midway Chevrolet Company One LLC in the amount not to exceed 332,055.11 subject to release of the manufacturer's official 2024 published pricing and discount off of the manufacturer's retail price as amended by the Arizona State Purchasing Office Cooperative and authorize the city manager to approve this amended adjustment.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frosley. All right, the next item on our agenda is the call to the public. This is what I mentioned earlier. This is where citizens have the opportunity to address the city council within the areas of the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City that might not be on the agenda. Otherwise, your comments would be limited to three minutes. In this case, the light indicator box remains the same. You don't have to sign up, but we did have several sign up, which I do think some may have left during call to the public. We can't have a two-way conversation, so we'll listen intently, maybe give staff direction. We can respond to criticism, but we can't really talk about it because it's not on the agenda. So we'll start with the, in the order that folks signed up. Roger Open. Looks like Mr. Open has left. Gary Haddock, which he has left as well. He spoke to us earlier. Ms. Sheila Murphy also, looks like she left. She spoke to us earlier. Ms. Sally Fredrickson, is Sally in? Looks like Sally may have left. Mike Pettit. Jim Tackey, which he left as well. Melissa Johnston. Lisa Stoltz. Rod Stoltz. And Thomas Perlay. Perlay. All right, that concludes those that signed up. Would anyone like to address the city council otherwise during call to the public? Please make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Bonnie, I, beautiful, wonderful council. I love you guys, I really appreciate you guys. I thank you for everything you have done, especially today, to listen to all the citizens. You guys are amazing and beautiful, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to make a suggestion to whoever's doing the city council agenda in the future, if you could kind of be kind to all the agenda item people who you know that are going to probably pass most likely, seven to zero, seven to zero, seven to zero. Maybe you could push those up to the very beginning so they don't have to sit around waiting on the ones that are going to be discussed for hours on end. I really appreciate everybody who is here and lasted through the whole thing. But man, those short, short ones really deserve to be able to go home and not have to, um, to deal with that. I just wanted to make that suggestion. Also, I noticed that over this weekend, we were going to be attacked by Hillary. And I understand that she was really going to be maddening. However, she ended up not being too maddening. But your social media posts on the city's Facebook page were not very informative in a timely manner. The, there's a lot of issues when it comes to the city's own Facebook page, which is, I don't know if you knew this, but except for the person, and maybe you can find a volunteer, but Facebook is free advertising and free informational place that you can inform your citizens of what is going on in their city for free. And it doesn't cost you anything, except for the, maybe a person to volunteer to push a couple buttons that, you know, I don't know who's in charge of the whole Facebook rules and regulations for cities. But there are a couple other cities that are totally informative. And the one city, the mayor was out there filling up sandbags. Like, dude, I know you're running for another elected office. You don't have to be out there showing off. However, information for your citizens, having informed citizens is very important. And if you're relying on the newspaper, I'm really sorry to tell you, but a lot of your citizens are not reading the newspaper. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public? Seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. Move on to item nine, which is our current events. Are there any council committee reports?
Mayor, I just wanted to say we had a great ArizonaAtWorks convening with the Tri-City Council two weeks ago, I guess it was. And I appreciate everybody that came out there, including Councilwoman Lynn. There was a lot of requests about more public support on that. But I will have to say, I think we got to almost 100 people convening and we got a lot of great information out there, including opportunities for GEDs. And go onto arizonaatworks.com. If you have any other questions, please come talk to me. I can definitely help you out. If you're having some problems with employees, retention tools, you name it, I can help you. So just come and call me or talk to me. Thank you much.
Thank you. Are there any other council committee reports? All right, future meetings. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, September 12th, 2023, at 5:30 PM. And we will have another meeting on Tuesday, September 26th, 2023, at 5:30 PM. Item 11, are there any future discussion items?